Tom Lovett.
Here.
Kim Gleason.
Yeah, good morning.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Richard Werner.
Here.
Tammy Colby.
Here and good morning, everyone.
Gray Fieran.
I'm here.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Caleb Greenwood.
Here.
Chair Samuelson.
Here. Good morning. Thank you.
And interim Secretary Sanders.
Here.
All right. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will turn to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, if you are on our Teams platform, you can raise the hand icon. And if you are calling in, it's star five to raise your hand. So it looks like I see a couple of, it looks like we've got three so far. We do ask that members limit their comments to two minutes. And if you have any written comments that you would like to submit for inclusion in the minutes, you are certainly welcome to do so. So I saw Elizabeth Rose first, so we'll go to you and then Sue Seglowski.
Thank you. I would just like to, I just resubmitted the comment that a group of, for full disclosure, I am a representative representing Windsor One. And I'm also a school board member and supervisory union board member. And I would like to refer to the, shoot, the comment that was submitted in January regarding transparency in the, in the State Board of Education and its subcommittees and request that that the State Board of Education be mindful about being fully transparent with its public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I would like to ask that the comments that I just resubmitted to Maureen be taken into the meetings for the, for this, the minutes for this meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sue Seglowski.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Sue Seglowski. I'm the executive director of the Vermont School Boards Association. And I'm here to provide public comment on Agenda Item R, Reflections from the 2024 State Board of Education Retreat. First, we commend the State Board for holding a retreat and spending time on the important topics of board norms and standard operating procedures. The manner in which the State Board of Education conducts its business is crucial and can significantly impact its effectiveness, transparency, and public trust. As the state level board addressing education, this board should serve as a model for good governance. The work that began at the State Board Retreat should continue. In a memorandum to the State Board dated September 11th, 2024, the chair responds to the concerns raised at the retreat and asserts that no members of the public have raised concerns about how the board performs its work. This is not true. The V S B A and other education associations have communicated with this board several times over the past several months on that very topic. On August 4th, 2023, the V S B A provided public comment to the Board's Rule 2200 Committee expressing concerns about the misnaming of committee meetings on the website, approval of minutes that didn't comply with the open meeting law, and motions to enter executive session that didn't state the nature of the business of the executive session as required by the open meeting law. On August 16th, 2023, the V S B A, along with other education associations, provided public comment to the board on the proposed changes to the Rule 2200 series. We stated in some, we are concerned that the process of the proposed amendments to the rules lacks transparency and accountability. We believe that the State Board must operate in compliance with the most basic transparency and accountability expectations so that Vermonters can fairly participate and bear witness to the State Board's actions. On September 6th, Vermont Superintendent's Association Executive Director Jeff Francis sent an email to the State Board Secretary Search Committee, following up on his September 1 public comments to the committee. His comments focused on the lack of accessibility to the committee's meeting, which the public could only access by telephone. Another example of concerns raised about how the board performs its work is V S B A resolution passed last October, which required the V S B A to convene a task force to assess concerns regarding and failures of the State Board of Education and/or Agency of Education, and thereafter provide to the governor and the legislature a list of recommended actions they should take in order to provide appropriate support toward the education of Vermont's students. The task force called for in the resolution has completed its work and its report will be issued in October. There are other examples of concerns we have raised about how this board performs its work, but I don't have time to cover them here. I will conclude by emphasizing the importance of board norms and protocols as well as transparency in the board's work. Please continue to work on improving those aspects of this board's work so that you become a model for good governance. The state's students are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Martine Gulick and then Jay Nichols.
Good morning, everybody. I hope you can hear me. My name is Martine LaRocque Gulick. I am a state senator and vice chair of Senate Education. I'm on the Health and Welfare Committee. I'm happy to be here. Couple of things. First, I just want to thank you all for your service. I know that this is hard work. And I and many, many Vermonters really appreciate the time that you put into making sure that our education system is, is a well-oiled machine. And I really appreciate all that you do. That said, I apologize. I haven't been here before. I just got out of a fairly competitive primary and was very busy for the last couple of months, but I'm happy to be here today. I do pay attention to what's going on with the State Board of Education as it is so incredibly important. And with that said, I will just make a couple of comments and I will provide them to you in writing as well. And the first is just around a question I've been asking in a lot of spaces lately, which is, where, what is your strategic plan and where is it? A strategic plan, as you all know, is part of, for the State Board to have a strategic plan is part of statute. And it's really supposed to be, as far as I'm concerned, a living document that sort of guides everything that you do. We worked on our strategic plan over quite a long period of time here in the Burlington School District, and we use it regularly to help inform all the decisions that we make. So I would love to see yours. Maybe it's buried somewhere, but I would love to see it and I would love to learn more about how it informs your work. The second one was just about your relationship with the Commission on the Future of Public Education, which is a, an enormously important body. I would like to know how Chair Samuelson is representing all of your voices on that commission. I'm curious as to what the process is to make sure that you are all being heard in the work of that commission and would love, again, would just love to know how that process plays out and how it manifests on the commission. I'm probably running out of time. So again, I just want to say thank you and I will provide this in writing. I hope you have a great meeting and look forward to seeing you all in person at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Jay Nichols.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jay Nichols, Executive Director of the Vermont Principals Association. I'm curious as to what's happening with the State Board Committee on Roles and Responsibilities. I noticed their most recent meeting was canceled or postponed. I'm unclear exactly what happened there. We think it is important to get the take of all current State Board members as to what they believe the roles and responsibilities of the State Board should be going forward. This is important information for the Commission on the Future of Public Education and the General Assembly to have as Vermont considers what our education system and governance of that system will look like going into the future. So to that end, we implore the board to continue this important work. Having a state board that truly represents the needs of all students is critical to the future of Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin McGuire.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Erin McGuire. I am the Director of Equity and Inclusion as well as the co-director of Student Support Services for the Essex Westford School District. I serve as the policy lead for the Vermont Educational Equity Collective. I'm the past president of the Vermont Council of Special Education Administrators, and I also just finished a presidency related to the National Organization for Special Education Directors. I share that with you because I have a couple of comments this morning related to a number of different topics on your agenda. First, I'd like to just recognize the rapid turnover of the Director of Special Education within the Agency of Education that I think is really coming to a point of critical conversation. I just wanted to share in this space, I have shared this in many spaces, but have not shared it here, that I think that the Director of Special Education is far too buried inside of the organizational chart of the Agency of Education. Special Education Directors sit on their superintendent cabinets, and I think that may be part of the problem. And so just wanted to provide that feedback both to the agency and to the State Board as it feels relevant. I also wanted to recognize that the ethnic studies standards are in the context of your agenda today. And I wanted to just share my perspective about the importance of those moving forward while also if it is going into a committee for the agent, for the State Board, that you're very careful about making alterations to the ethnic studies standards without the voices of those most impacted. Lastly, I'd like to make comment in line with the things that have been mentioned already today that I, you know, are on your agenda and part of your materials today around the process of planning, organization, and communication of the State Board. Just wanted to provide a thought from a practitioner in the field. I would always hope that our State Board would have an agenda planning team. And I think that's really important and just reiterate Martine's comments about a work plan or a strategic plan that is visible to the field. I think you play a critical role in the leadership of the work that we do. And we need to be able to see that and hear that and understand it. It's so important for our work. Thanks for letting me speak today. Thank you for all of your work and look forward to hearing more as you, as you progress.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard? I'm not seeing any hands either online or on the phone. I will just highlight for members of the public, some of you who I think are seasoned commenters. So the, the opportunity for public comment is really an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the board. It is not, you know, we don't respond on the spot, but I will just forecast that several of the issues that have been raised in public comment are going to be addressed in the meeting. So I think some of the questions that you might have will be answered and certainly we will do our best to respond to other comments as appropriate. But thank you all for coming. So let me just put that out there one more time. Any members of the public? Okay, I am not seeing anyone. So, and we will have another opportunity for public to be heard at the conclusion of our meeting, just in case anyone pops on later. Okay, at this point, this brings us to Agenda Item C, which is a motion to approve our meeting minutes from our August 21st, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move that.
Okay, it's been moved by Rich. Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Lyle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from our August 21st, 2024 meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions?
Yes, I'll abstain.
Okay, it's been, Tom is abstaining because he was not at the meeting. But it appears that the motion has carried. This brings us to a motion to approve our retreat minutes from our August 21st, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion?
Richard, I will move that as well.
All right. Is there a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Mohammed. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of approving our retreat minutes? Oh, yes.
Hi, Jennifer. I guess, I guess I want to just observe and note, and I understand, and having done retreats a lot as a work session with boards, there's far less detail included here in our minutes than is customary with other minutes. So I just, I want to acknowledge it. I don't think there's anything inaccurate about the minutes, so I'm going to vote to support them, but it, it doesn't reflect really any substance of our conversations. Which may or may not be important to the public on a body of work that we were doing on our own practices. So I just want to acknowledge it though.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
Just to tag onto that, it was a great discussion. I think it was free flowing and there really wasn't any decision-making going on. So that's why I would think that we don't have a lot of words on the agenda. So I think in the minutes rather, sorry.
Thank you. Jenna?
I do wonder where the work product goes from that session? Because we haven't, the sticky notes, I mean, there's the, the work that was generated. So the actual work, the substance of what was generated by the board. So I wonder, we approve the minutes with an addendum? Or do we not approve them without the addendum? I think like there, there has to be a process, like the minute should capture the actual work product.
So like, as far as like the, the photocopies of what Tammy wrote on the white pages and the sticky notes that were submitted by board members?
What, I think Tammy, Tammy, the role of the recorder, right? The recorder captured the discussion and then members of the, the board, right? Wrote their own sticky notes that they contributed with their own thoughts and ideas. So I'm wondering, how do we? I have those and I volunteered as a planning committee to type those, right? Like in, into the phase two of that discussion that we haven't, the subcommittee hasn't reconvened to process the planning of, and then the next steps. But how do we, where does that get captured, right?
So are you suggesting that the sticky notes, that that photocopy be appended to the minutes? That's what I'm asking.
That's a good question, too. Is it the, the photo of the sticky notes or is it a document that I, I could type up that reflects everything on the sticky notes? It's a good process question. I'm fine with the sticky notes for now, but I mean, the photos of the sticky notes, but.
Tammy, I think you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I do have pictures of the, the white pages and the sticky notes that I can share if, if there was some interested in pending. Oh, she's had them. There you go. I know we had them, we shared them for the Roles and Responsibilities Committee meeting, but I, I'm just going to say that I have those if those are of interest to people to append. I do like, but I will say, not to put more work on your plate, Jenna, I do like the idea of summarizing that information for two reasons. One, I think it'd be helpful to have it as part of the minutes, but I also think it would be helpful to summarize information so the board can reflect on it and think about next steps.
So let me suggest this, and Kim, I see you have your hand raised as well as Mohammed. We have a motion that's pending. I just want to sort of ground us where we are. I have not yet heard a motion to amend the motion. That is a possibility where we could amend the motion to include copies of the sticky notes. Or we could agree that we are going to approve the minutes as they are. And when the committee meets at its next meeting, that Jenna will have prepared her write-up by then and we will bring it back to the board at our next meeting. So that's another possibility. And there may be others that I'm not thinking of. So with that, Kim and Lyle, I'm sorry, Mohammed.
I wouldn't want to stop the session, but I wasn't back going to ask Rich, our parliamentarian, if it would be appropriate to make an amendment to the motion to approve to attach the photographs taken from the work product of that day as an add, an addendum to these minutes. Would that be the appropriate framing of that amendment, Rich?
You know, the, the problem with that is we don't have them to look at. So if we add it to it, then we're, we're kind of stuck with them, I think. I would think we maybe would want to vote this, this motion down up at the next meeting and get, actually have the documents to look at before we approve them. If they're going to be part of the minutes. That would be my thought.
And it's also possible that we could vote to approve the minutes now and then at our next meeting, we could vote to approve the summary as prepared by Jenna, right?
I think I'm not going to be comfortable with not having more content in these minutes. So I know for my sake, my vote will be no on these minutes as they are now without any addendum that includes it, but I appreciate what you're saying, Rich. I don't know to what extent it might be appropriate to take up these minutes after the break and provide just literally the photograph document that might later have sort of this, a summary that is in a document form. I don't, I don't know if that is a thing.
I, I, I would just think that, I would just think that without those, we shouldn't approve it today because nobody's had a chance to review them. You know, my thought again is to vote no on this since we already have a motion and a second and that we bring it up at the next meeting. I don't think there's anything that if we don't get them approved right now, that it's going to affect anything. But then whatever attachments are going to be, then everybody has a chance to review them, including the public.
Okay. And so, and I think that brings us to a third option, which is, Rich, I believe you made the motion, you could withdraw the motion.
Yeah, I hate withdrawn motions.
It's also on the agenda, right? So for action, so.
We can table the motion until our next meeting.
Sure. I'm good with that, too.
But
Mohammed wanted to react.
Correct. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just flagging this before I move on to Mohammed. So I think the procedure there would be that you and Rich have to withdraw your motion and then we would move to table. Am I correct?
Sure.
Okay. Let me turn to Mohammed.
Thank you. Rich has already mentioned a lot of what I wanted to say. Also, Jenna's point led me to think of the actual hard copies. What are we going to do with them after the photographs have been taken? Do we shred it? Do we store it somewhere? If we do store them somewhere, who's going to hold on to them?
I don't have an answer to that. We, I would assume right now Tammy has all of it. So I think it would, you know, Tammy could send the hard copies or provide them to Maureen and Suzanne the next time we meet in person. And then they could live with the agency.
Thank you.
I see Kim's hand. May I ask a question quickly, though? And this may be a comp, a question for Maureen. Are digitized copies? I don't know that we save a lot of paper these days. So if there are pictures or they're digitized, is that okay? Or do you actually need the, I mean, I have the physical paper, but
Well, and I'm only and, and I don't know, I don't recall seeing anything in Robert's Rules on this. I can tell you that in the legal world, you still have to provide that electronic copies are as acceptable as the original or effective. So you have to write that clause in. I don't know that we've done that. So we could, we certainly could. But I think the most prudent, you know, the, the gold standard here is to let the hard copies live with Maureen and Suzanne, if they don't mind. Kim?
Are we talking about the hard copies of the white and work paper and the sticky notes on it? They have to retain those. Anyway, I, I guess that's just, that's rhetorical. It seems shocking to me, but I think the photographs of those having been done are not open to interpretation. They are just a matter of fact, that which was the work product of the day. And so they really aren't even sort of a matter, I guess, as I would see it, it's not a matter of me approving or not approving. It is what it was. And there were pictures taken of our sticky notes, our work session, work product. And so it would seem like if there's a document that has all the pictures on it, that is attached to these minutes. And I'm not sure what I would disapprove about them. So I don't, I don't care if we push this off, but I would want to see that picture attached, even if Jenna were otherwise willing to sort of summarize it in a bulleted order that followed the flow of the conversation. That would be fine, too. But I think a photograph of what that work product was as it was attached to the walls would feel as though it's the most clean version of the work product of that day.
Rich?
I'm sorry, my computer's so small. I gotta be on the other computer for the agenda, but I would like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need to second that? Or you just withdraw? I think you just withdraw, right?
Yeah, I threw her second and should withdraw their second and then we're all good. We can move on.
Okay, I think that was Mohammed.
Thank you guys for the discussion. And I, I just, I guess to Mohammed's question of where these things are stored, it would seem once it's attached to the minutes, it becomes posterity. And it's, once it's been approved. So I would imagine that that seems to be an adequate level of storage, but and I guess you all can figure out that piece for the next meeting.
Right.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, I can ask around and see if there's a better answer. Tammy and then Mohammed, I'm going to ask if you are willing to withdraw your second. Tammy?
I withdraw my.
I didn't second. Mohammed did. So then I'll go let Mohammed withdraw and then I have a question.
Okay, so he did withdraw.
Feeling a little, little uncertain about next steps and process here. So I will hand off paper copies to Maureen at National Life. I can do that. And then is Jenna summarizing that information and then that's getting appended to the minutes? And then we're all going to take another look at the minutes at our next meeting? Or are we appending the pictures? I, I lost track of what, what I think, what, what our next step is. I, I think we just got to be clear on that.
I think we've, well, we've withdrawn the motion and the second. Okay, so there's currently nothing on that's pending. I think the plan is that we are going to move to table the motion to approve the minutes of the retreat from August 21st. It seems clear, I'm hearing consensus around appending photocopies of the sticky notes and the, the white paper to the meeting minutes that will be approved by the board at our next meeting when everyone has had a chance to review it. And then I think whether Jenna wants to summarize is, I mean, the first instance, maybe a question for Jenna. I don't know if you feel like that's still necessary, but it would also be discussed by the committee. So Jenna, let me turn to you.
So two things, as a person who's totted around chart paper with sticky notes, after transporting that, it's, it's, the accuracy is highly compromised. So I would, if anybody wants to save an original copy, it would be the photograph. Second of all, I just wanted to be clear in the language that I'm not summarizing, right? Like I'm, I am transport, I'm like recording what was initiated by this board. And I'm typing up the headings and people's responses to have it on a, a sheet of paper or two or three that becomes a more manageable document for the board to work from. I just feel like the word, like if I'm summarizing it, it seems like I may be adding my own language into a summary, where I just want to be clear that I'm just, I'm, I'm typing what the board has generated.
Thank you. Kim?
I was just realizing, I'm thinking about the accessibility piece as I'm looking at Maureen and Suzanne and feeling that that transcribed document of the photocopy with sticky notes would be pretty important for posting. And I'm, I'm guessing I'm right. I'm seeing a nod. So I, I think that if I could request that Jenna do just what she was describing, that those, that picture of those sticky work product become a document that is literally Picture of those sticky work product become a document that is literally just lifting and dropping it under the headings with bullets as it's written.
And I do. We, I agree. I think we do still need to keep the originals um for posterity, just because they are the original documents.
So to clarify, there'd be two attachments to this um skeleton version of minutes. For approval for next meeting.
Okay, thanks. Um, if there's nothing further, do we have a motion to table our retreat minutes from our August 21st, 24th meeting? Until our next um State Board of Ed monthly meeting?
Yes, motion. That's.
Okay.
Yes.
So moved by, is there a second?
I will second that. Kim stole my motion.
Sorry, I've got to be really quick to do that. Rich is on it. So sorry about that.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of tabling our retreat minutes for our August 21st, 24th meeting until the next meeting of the full State Board of Education? Please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Not hearing any, any abstentions. Okay, the motion carries. Um, Rich, you do have your hand up. Is that? Okay.
Yeah, I do have one quick thing. I'm under members of the public and I'm not sure. Um, we did have that one letter to the board and shouldn't we acknowledge that under members of the public, just that we received it so that it shows in the minutes that? Um, it was received and we have it or do we not usually do that? I can't remember.
Can you help me?
We had a letter from a parent out of um Fynn Valley School about the. And I don't see it in the agenda, but it was in the packet. I, I saw it somewhere in something.
It will be included under public comment. Um, that was her request. Well, actually, she emailed me. I asked if um she wanted it to be included as public comment and she said yes.
So I just, because you know, nobody else will see that or, or hear that who's attending the meeting or in the recording. So I wonder if we should just acknowledge that we did receive a letter. And that will be included in the minutes. And it's more of a question.
Um, it will be included in the minutes for sure under public. Well, I mean, it's in the agenda packet under public comment, correct?
It doesn't on the agenda. That's why I've been bouncing back and forth because on the agenda, it just says public comment. But there's nothing about um public to be heard. And I don't know if we are going to include letters where people aren't actually in. Uh, live attendance, if it should just be acknowledged so that it's in the record.
Yes, that would be my intent, that it would be included under public comment. Um, and. Forgive me because I'm, I'm trying to. Find the public comment quickly and I'm unable to do so, but it um. And please remind me of her name, um, if you have.
Krista, maybe?
Yeah.
Rutherford? Rushford, yes, thank you.
Okay, so public comments.
I just, you know, we, we, at the meeting, we were discussing, you know, to make sure that we, we acknowledge stuff and. It's just like I said, if, if I was just sitting in the meeting or watching the meeting, I would never know that. And then I would see it in the minutes. I'm like, well, when did they do that? I. I just think it would be a good practice maybe for us. And I'm happy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Rich. I agree.
All right. Um, so that will be attached. In our minutes, it's in the agenda packet. Anything else before we move on to our next agenda item? All right. Um, so next.
I have, I have something, sorry.
Oh, yes.
I, I'm not how inconvenient this is going to be, but I may be hoping into a different meeting at noon.
Okay, is that for the remainder of the? Meeting like, or will you be back?
Um, I'm not sure, honestly, at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll make a note of that under board announcements. Thank you. Um, okay, so I'm going to do a resolution, going to read a resolution um for Heather Boucher. So as you all know, Heather's last day at the agency was um last week and um. I did reach out to her to let her know that we would be doing this for her today. She was unable to join us, um, but I can tell you that she was very touched. And so um I've prepared a resolution um with some good feedback that I've received. And um this will be sent to her um so that she can have it. But for the moment, I'm going to read this into the record and then this too will be um attached um in our minutes. So this is the Vermont State Board of Education Resol- Resolution of Appreciation. For Heather A. Boucher. Whereas Heather A. Boucher has served this agency of education as its deputy secretary and on two separate occasions as its acting or interim secretary. And whereas as acting secretary, Heather oversaw and issued the secretary's proposed statewide plan pursuant to Act 46, Section 10. Which served as a resource and recommendation to the state board in issuing its final statewide plan and order. It was a vast undertaking that fundamentally changed our education landscape. And whereas during her time at the agency, Heather also led the agency's education recovery initiative to help families, schools and communities recover in the aftermath of the COVID-19 pandemic. And further directed the agency's response to the 2023 flood emergency. And whereas, no matter her role, Heather has demonstrated both a solid understanding of the intricacies of our education landscape. And an unwavering commitment to all Vermont students through improving literacy, identifying and providing necessary supports to at-risk students. Addressing students mentally. Increasing student access to after-school programming and summer opportunities. Leading statewide efforts that resulted in increased enrollment at our career and technical education centers. Providing local education agencies and critical guidance and homeless services. Implementing an emergency. Enhonesing statewide efforts to improve social equity and addressing. And I'm just going to pause because I'm hearing feedback.
Maureen, maybe you, I'm seeing that you're unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you. And whereas Heather is remembered by her colleagues as an understanding, inclusive and intelligent leader who never fails to remember her roots. Always makes time for others and strives to model how to take risks and do meaningful work despite challenging situations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Vermont State Board of Education recognizes and commends the service and contributions of Heather A. Boucher. To the state of Vermont and be it further resolved that her colleagues offer to Heather their gratitude for her unwavering commitment to education in Vermont. As well as their best wishes to her as she embarks on this next chapter of her life. Dated at Wenthalvermont this 18th day of September, 2024, Vermont State Board of Education by Jennifer Deck Samuelson, its chair. I'll pause there if anyone has any comments. All right, hearing none, uh, will be sent on to Heather, um, just so that she can keep it. And um, I just wanted to say personally, it was really a pleasure for me working with Heather. Um, I really enjoyed. Both our friendship on a professional level as well as the camaraderie um that she brought to the position. Um. So I wanted to thank her um just for my own sake. So with that, I will turn to board announcements. Um, Mohammed, I heard that you may be leaving at noon. We'll see. Um, are there other board announcements? I've got a few. Kim?
I thank you. I have a couple. I just similarly, um, thank you to Heather and I'd just like to acknowledge it with gratitude. Just a careless service to the state of Vermont and the education field. And students and families as the prior director of student pathways. And she had been with the agency, it looks like since 2016. And I just have known her in a few different hats to have been a really trusted resource. At the state level for those in the field and a passionate um supporter of students. Finding their pathways and supporting our districts to be able to um embrace and, and nurture and move. With efficacy, um, learning in whatever path is best and most effective for students. And um her expertise and her dedication to the field will be missed. And then, secondly, I'd like to just remind people of the invitation we received from the V SBA, the S A. Regarding the conference, which will take place October 24th and 25th. Um, it's a celebration of public education in Vermont and I, I can reforward it to everyone. Um, under, at, under one, section 164, general powers and duties of the State Board of Ed. The very first thing that is listed there is engage local school board members and broader education community. So as that being our statutory responsibility, I can think of no better way for those who may find themselves available to attend. To be able to do so in the responsibilities of the state board. I would like to sort of confirm that that is um a reimbursable expense as that had been initially thought to be the case two years ago when I attended and. And also participated as EQS um co-chair in some of the discussions that were happening around EQS with the field. Um, but then that ended up not being reimbursed. Um, that being said, I continue to believe it's a really important way for us to um. Be fully present and engage with local school board members as is our first duty. Under statute.
Um, I'm gonna have to dust off that, that, because I know, Kim, you and I had um some emails back and forth on that. I. Um, so I'd have to go back and refresh my memory as to what the standard is. I think. I, I don't want to guess, but I, I think it would be, you know, someone who is there representing the board. And then the question is, on what grounds would someone be representing the board? Um, because certainly. If you're there in your own capacity, that's completely fine. Um, but I think if you were there representing the board, then we would have to understand in what capacity you're representing the board.
Anyway, I guess then maybe we want to add this as a conversation later in the meeting. I don't know where you want to do it. I think the board should be discussing this because it is. Very clear in statute that this is a responsibility of ours. And so I'm not sure how it wouldn't be an official capacity, but again, I don't, I don't think we need to argue it now. I do think we need to discuss it as a board. It's a statutory. Requirement for us to be doing so. And I don't know anywhere else that we're doing that actively. Um, so I, I would take it to be, I appreciate it's not something I don't even know that I am available to attend. I'm just suggesting that our full board have that invitation. And um I would like for us to take that aspect of our responsibilities. Into account as we consider whether or not people are able to make time for it. And to um report back to the board and, you know, on other boards on which I serve, that is often what will happen if you attend a conference or a training or otherwise. You come back and report back um to the full board and that meets the standard of um doing it in the context of our responsibilities.
Yeah, okay. So let me, because we've already passed the time to amend the agenda. I think maybe what would make more sense is to put this on the agenda for our October meeting, which is still in advance of. The conference so that we can have a thought out discussion about it. Um, because again, I'd like to review the statute um and. Just make sure that we're, we're not making decisions on the fly.
Yeah, it's, it's section 164, Jennifer. It's right there. So.
No, I know.
I understand.
That's, that's not the section that I'm talking about. It's the reimbursement section of it.
Okay, I am not sure what the deadline for response is, but I just invite the board to seriously consider both our responsibilities and the opportunity. There's, um, it looks as though I've looked at the agenda, the evening will include a number of student. Um, presentations and opportunities to really uh see what's going on in the field for students and to hear. It looks like a good focus of the second day is around community engagement. And I know that's a goal of ours as well. And I recall. Um, and probably which knows as well, that is often among the harder things to do in. Our local boards is engage with the community in a proactive manner. It's just challenging. So it sounds like there may be some good resources for us even as. State board members to take in as collective learning or shared learning or learning that we bring back to the board whomever is able to go. Um, in our own professional development as we consider our responsibilities for um engagement with the broader education community. That's my announcement. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Um, just making a note of this. Um, okay. Are there other announcements before, oh, Lyle, I see you've got your hand raised.
Just a quick one here, just the Rutland Region Workforce Investment Board is celebrating receiving a Department of Labor Workforce Opportunities and Rural Communities grant. In the amount of 1.25 million dollars and that grant will be used over the next three years to create a system and process for paid and unpaid internship opportunities. With uh juniors and seniors in high school and area employers. With the goal of creating relationships and encouraging students to go primarily into the trades. And so we're excited about that. And that's all I know at this point, other than I'm the treasurer of the Workforce Investment Board and I'm glad that we're putting money into it. So. That's my announcement. Unless you didn't see that we just made the largest whoopee pie in the world here in Rutland and we celebrated that on Saturday. 1,187 pounds. Blowing away the competition.
Lots going on in Rutland. Congratulations.
I have a question, Lyle. Are you able to use any of that money to support internships around robotics for your first students?
You're reading my mind, Tammy.
I was getting very excited because I was like, this could be great because we talked about the need to get grants. So tell us more.
Stay tuned.
Okay.
I'm waiting with bated breath.
Mohammed.
Hey, I would like to um cheer everyone who celebrates um Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15th to October 15th. And I remind us all, um, it's a part of us caring for one another and remembering everyone we work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I've got a couple of announcements. Um, the first is ethics training and I just want to thank Kim again for um. Bringing this to the board's attention and sending the link. Um, I know that Kim, Lyle and I have taken the ethics training. Have any other members that I don't know about taking the training yet? Rich has. And Mohammed has. Okay, um, so for those of you who have not yet taken it, um, it is a pretty easy, um. Slightly interactive, um, to keep it fun and interesting. Um, presentation and at the end of it, you get a certificate of completion. Um, that should be sent to Maureen and Suzanne with the copy to me, just so that I know that you've taken it. Um, the other, well, my next announcement is that um. As Sue Seglowski had mentioned, um, in the V SBA report. Um, at last year's annual meeting, uh, the V SBA passed a resolution to create a task force to examine the failures of the state board and the agency. And thereafter to provide a report to the governor and the general assembly, um, with a list of recommendations. Their work is now complete. I had reported to the board. Um, back in March, our March meeting, that I had an initial conversation with Sandra Cameron. Who is the associate executive director at the V SBA and Claire Wool, who's the chair of the Burlington School District School Board. Um, who is, I think, in charge of overseeing that um task force. Um, had an initial conversation with them last March. Um, and then I had a follow-up conversation with them on August 27th to debrief. Now that their work is done, um, as Sue mentioned, there will be a report that has not yet been released. I've not seen it. Um, and when I do, I will share it with the board. Um, but what the, the takeaways from my conversation on August 27th were um. A lot of the questions that the V SBA received as they were looking into um this resolution. Was what the State Board of Ed is responsible for and what our function is. And these are, as we know, and we're going to get into this later in our meeting, these are very timely issues. Um, and I said, even the board does not have clarity on what its roles and functions are. Um, and this is. A question that I think has been lingering since 2012, when the agency um became an agency and was elevated um to that position. So. Um, I fully agree that that's something that the board needs to figure out. Um, there was also some interest expressed in how people can apply to be on the board, uh, when positions become available. Um, they also expressed a commitment to working together, which I think is really important to underscore. Um, that, you know, we are on the same side of the, the, the table here. We are not fighting with each other. Um, we really are collaborative partners, um, working together to. Um, further education in Vermont to benefit all of our students. Um, and then there was a discussion about communicating to the general assembly at the beginning of the legislative session. Um, that quote unquote less is more and that there are a lot of things that are. um, that quote unquote, less is more, and that there are a lot of things that are in transition right now, um, and that um, the, the S B A feels, and you know, I personally agree, I mean, we can have a conversation about this. But there are a lot of moving pieces here, and it would be nice to let things settle out before we like layer on more obligations onto our schools. Um, so there was some conversation about that. Um, so when that report comes out, um, you know, I will, hopefully that will reiterate the um, the takeaways that I had with um, Sandra and Claire. But again, I will forward that to the board. Um, and then my last announcement, and then I will pause. Um, I just want to um, reiterate that there was an announcement in the agenda packet from the Agency of Education, Department of Public Safety, and the Vermont School Safety Center, that the governor's annual school safety conference will be held at the Doubletree in Burlington on September thirtieth. Um, so that's in the agenda packet. I'm not going to reread it, but um, anyone with questions can contact, hey, excuse me, Taylor Goodwin, the agency's Safe and Healthy Schools Coordinator at Taylor dot Goodwin at Vermont dot gov with any questions. Um, so I will pause there. Kim?
Um, Jennifer, just to clarify, if that involves mileage for someone attending, I know the conference itself, I think, is free. If that involves mileage, do you deem that, or does this board deem that to be reimbursable?
Um, are we talking about the, the?
The governor's school safety conference. We just had this conversation about the V S B A.
Okay, right. I was making sure that we were on the same page here. Um, I think that would fall under the same category of um, we need to have a conversation about it at our next meeting. And I think if the meeting is a reimbursable expense, the mileage would also be reimbursable. But um, I think those two things sort of go lockstep with each other. Um, I was just, he sent this to me and I asked if he wanted me to um, include it in the agenda packet. Um, and the answer was yes. So I'm just, you know, carrying through on the promise that I made to do that. Um, I don't think this was necessarily, I mean, it could be for board members, but I think he was really just trying to spread the word to the public generally.
Okay, so it's not an official board duty or anything?
No, I think he was just trying to spread the word.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Um, the other thing, I will note, we're a little bit off schedule, which often happens. Um, I, before we finish board announcements, I do want to flag, I know there are some people who may have firm um, cutoffs at the end of our meeting today at one thirty. So I just want to make sure that we do our best to stay on schedule because we have a lot to go through today. Um, this is one of the medias agendas I think the board has had for a while. Um, so I'm just flagging that um, just so that we all try our best to sort of stay um, on schedule. Any other board announcements? All right. Hearing none, um, it's time for our student report. So Gray, I will start with you and then we'll turn it to Caleb.
All right. I'm starting my senior year at Virginia's. Um, and things are going pretty well so far. We've only been in school for like three weeks now, so not a ton has happened. My little sister is in high school with me now. She's a ninth grader, which is very weird. Um, and in fact, even my little cousins are in seventh grade now, and Virginia's is all one school building. So most of the family is all in the same building. Uh, that's unsettling. But uh, the school year is going good. Um, all sports are starting for me, cross-country. We've had a couple of meets um, at Burlington and Essex. But lots of our sports teams, I think, are doing very well. I know the girls soccer team is doing really well. And uh, yeah, a lot of my classes are pretty simple since it's my senior year. I'm taking a dual enrollment class. I'm taking intro to political science through uh, C C V online, which is exciting for me because political science is what I want to major in. And I'm taking that and I'm taking A P Gov through the school normally. So it's a, it's a cool year for me. I'm really excited about a lot of my classes. And then just general things with the school. We've had um, over the summer and at the end of last school year, we had constructions on our bathrooms all throughout the school. Uh, which was a highly controversial thing, actually, because the changes we were making was for a universal bathroom setup. So basically bathrooms that are open and facing the hallway, and it's all individual stalls, and it's not gender-based as opposed to like um, men, women's restroom that has, you know, it, it's all, it's mostly just because we needed the bathrooms redone anyways, and there it's facing the public. But for various reasons, it became a, a major topic of controversy in last year's budget season. So the whole town is kind of um, strangely against it. But they were finally built, so we got to, to see the results of that. I personally, I mean, I'm a little biased because I'm a member of the school board and I always thought it would be fine. I don't think it's a big change at all, but I wanted to address that since it's like the talk of the town right now in Virginia's. Um, and then there are some changes in rules to the school, one being that uh, the doors are locked all of the time now, which is not something that's being talked about, but I think should be talked about. It's a safety thing. This gets increased more and more every year. And I'm gonna bring it up because I try to bring it up whenever I can. That, you know, the way we're always talking about school safety, so it started with like some doors are locked, or you're supposed to go to the front entrance to get into the school. And then we're told that we're not allowed to let people into doors in the school if they knock um, for potential threat risk and stuff like that. And, and in my opinion, at least, it just keeps increasing to the point where now after school, for instance, you know, I do cross-country, it starts at four thirty, it goes to like seven. I'm, that's, you know, just behind the school, where outside, obviously, I cannot get back into the school building. It's extremely difficult for me every day if there's no one in there. So I can't leave my stuff in the school building, which actually creates its own safety hazard because all of us are leaving all of our personal items just outside because we can't get back into the school building. So that's one thing I'll complain about, about the school this year. Um, but the more, the more notable change in the rule, the rules um, is a crackdown on phone policy. Every year, there's also similarly kind of a different layout of like new phone rules, we're going towards more phone bans. And this year is certainly the most extreme. Currently, our school stance is that it's no phones for teachers or students from eight to three, full school day. Between breaks, it doesn't matter no matter what, we're not supposed to have our phones on us. I don't know how much that will be enforced. There's lots of rumors about like everyone's phones, teachers included, get put in like bags and stuff, but that has not happened yet. So I'll update you guys if that is at all a success. Because I, I don't know how that'll go. And certainly, uh, another topic of controversy. And then um, just uh, some other things uh, with triple E happening, there's a lot of changes in rules. Um, like sports now all have to be moved earlier, at least for these like two or three weeks. Um, so that no one's outside after six o'clock. And uh, homecoming, we usually have a big homecoming bonfire that unfortunately wasn't able to happen this year, also because of triple E. So lots of things were adjusted for that reason. Um, yeah, uh, that's about it, uh, Virginia's.
That, that's a lot going on, Gray. Um, board members, comments, questions? I'm curious, Gray, where does your phone live during the school day?
Uh, my, my phone just stays in my pocket for now because it's not told otherwise. Uh, different, right now at least, we're kind of in a stage where different teachers have different policies about phone rules, which is kind of how it always happens. And they sort of start to, if it's anything like last year, they'll just sort of start to crumble apart throughout the year. So certain teachers don't think it's a big thing at all. There are lots of teachers that will come out and be like, the administration really told us not to enforce this rule at all, so it doesn't matter. Which is not, so there's no, there's no amount of unity on the phone rules right now. So we'll see. It would require more of a, of a definitive. Everyone has to put their phones in these bags or something like that for it to actually work, which is talked about, but I don't know if it'll actually come to fruition.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Gray. Um, I have two questions. So on the after-practice thing, are the team, are the coaches at least able to get you back into the buildings? Like, uh, there, it seems like there must be in the interest of safety, some way to secure the building, but also accommodate things like after-school practices. There must, there, there should be something.
Uh, yeah, the coaches do have keys to get into the building, which um, sometimes works and sometimes doesn't. Not the keys themselves, but just like, my coach, for instance, did not have a key for, I don't know. I don't know if he does now, but didn't for a while just because it wasn't given to him and he was trying to get it. Or something like that, or just, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, for context, last year it was that at three thirty, the back school door, like the gym entrance, would be unlocked um, until like six thirty, because, I mean, the whole, it's not like no one's around, the whole fields are full of people that are doing after-school activities and doing sports and stuff. No reason we shouldn't be able to get back into the school, in my opinion. But yeah.
For sharing, yeah. And then um, my other, I was appreciating your feedback on sort of at least your student perspective on the change in the bathrooms. I know so many of these things create um, controversies in our communities and are um, something that is either meaningful or a non-issue for students. And it, it was helpful to sort of hear your perspective on the bathroom situation. So thanks for sharing.
All right, Jenna and then Mohammed, and then we'll move to Caleb.
So thank you, Gray, for sharing about the phone ban. It seemed like a lot of schools came out with phone bans for faculty or uh, students over the summer, which happened without a lot of um, faculty input or student voice. So I am curious to, to hear an update and see how that's going at, at your school and recommendations that might come from students as well. So thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think there's going to be a lot of push, I mean, all across America towards like a, at least considering phone bans in school. It's a pretty big thing right now. I know a guy, um, I want to say it's from Kentucky, who, his, his school is no like electronics or anything, everything's on paper for their school. Um, and I was able to talk over the summer with him a lot about how that is laid out, and it, it's pretty interesting to hear. And um, I had a lot of discussion with him about, he had talked about um, the idea of moving education away from technology. Uh, it was interesting.
Mohammed?
Hey, Gray, always nice to hear from you. Um, and thanks for the updates. When I heard you talk about uh, you not being able or your team or anyone who plays sports um, out there kind of get back to the building when they need to, uh, it makes me think of directing you to your school safety committee. Um, I'm pretty sure you have one, and, or I hope your school has one. Because of many factors, I'm already sensing around you not being able to get back to the building. It's, um, are your belongings safe where you put them while you are practicing? That's the question number one. Number two, um, what are we talking about run, hide and fight? You are in the backfield. Where will you run into to hide uh, when we talk about safety around weapons and things like that? So I'm, I'm really curious and I would love you to really uh, consult with, with your um, coaches and your school safety committee. Because I do understand some after-school programs are not led by the school itself. Uh, they may be uh, led by some other or external providers. But still, our students remain our students, whether the service is provided by um, our own schools or by independent contractors. We should still always uh, care about our students, their belongings and their safety. So I just want to mention that part. And thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I try to talk to Ed about, I, I try to talk about it to anyone I can.
All right, Caleb, uh, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Gray. That was very interesting, just to hear the contrast between our schools because Lake Region seems a bit more lax compared to Virginia's. Because our phone policy relating it to that is a bit more based on the teacher, because some teachers will just say, we don't want to see your phones at all, like, just leave it in your bag in your pocket, this somewhere where I don't have to see it. Some teachers will have you put it like up on the corner of your desk so that they know where it is and you know where it is, and it's just like there. And some teachers just like don't really care that much. And you just like, don't use it, I guess. But in terms of like school safety, other than like teachers who optionally like choose to lock their door, the closest thing we have to that is like the windows that have like the wire like crossed through them. I believe most classrooms, I don't know if it's necessarily a requirement, but most of them will have like either paper or something else like covering it, so that you can't see into the classroom. But I know that the other day we went through a drill, like a um, school safety drill. And we practice like barricading doors, stuff like that, just in case, of course, hoping that never happens. But yeah, it's just very interesting to hear the contrast between the two. But for me personally, I'm starting my junior year. We also started a couple of weeks ago. And it's going pretty well. I'm taking A P Human Geography, which is a class that our school offers. Even though it's a class structured for ninth graders, like the textbook we have is for ninth graders. You can either take it as a junior or a senior. So we have some seniors in our class, and it's a very fun class. It's probably one of my favorites right now. Um, our sports teams are going well. Unfortunately, we suffered a heartbreaking defeat last night, our girls varsity soccer did. But boys varsity will be playing North Country tonight, so we're looking forward to watching that. It's a nice rivalry game. So, yeah. And also, I have an idea, this is, I don't know if I can necessarily call it a student project, but it's an idea I've had for a while, and it sprouted from my parents talking about their like junior, senior year experiences of like, sorry, I've had pretty bad allergies recently, so I'm kind of recovering from that. But my parents, I'm hopefully going to be a first-generation college student. So they talked to me about how in their junior and senior years, they didn't really have a great outlet for someone to be like, you know, if you want to go to college, you should be applying for scholarships this time. And you should be taking these tests these times, or you should be taking these classes if you want to do this. Or even if you wanted to go into trades, like you might want to get an internship or an apprenticeship or take these classes if you want to go to this trade. So my idea, based on not only my experience here from last meeting where we were talking about general public having access to information that we go through, but also in school as a student. I've been thinking about an idea, which is basically like a calendar that you can filter so that you can see things like athletic events, but also academic things such as S A T dates, other testing like A C T, but also things like if you want to apply into this trade, you should have an apprenticeship or an internship somewhere this general time during your high school career. Or like suggestions, ways that you can link with guy, like either your school's guidance counselors or even other schools' guidance counselors as a way to help you get prepared for your future. So if anyone has any feedback on that or any ideas, I would love to hear that.
Thanks, Caleb. Um, Kim?
Yeah, that sounds like a really cool project. I'm curious if you've thought anymore about sort of where it would live such that it um, that students would even be aware it existed. I'm not sure it's the A O E website.
So, in terms of like my personal school, one way or one thing that we do is like morning announcements, which are posted on our school website. They're filmed in school. And they just go through like school events, but they never really do like academic things. So it would be like, you know, we have a soccer match tonight, this is what's for lunch. But I think that that could be a really good outlet for our school personally as a way to get it out. But I mean, there's always things like social media, the school website, things like that for my personal school. But for other schools, I'm not necessarily sure how we could personally, or potentially, I should say, get it into other schools.
It's um, interesting. I'd love to, you know, if there's anything maybe that we are even separately from this hat could do to help support that idea. I'm thinking the Vermont Principals Association maintains a um, athletic calendar for, you know, across the state at various division levels and otherwise. And I'm wondering if they might be an interested partner in considering what this might look like um, as a place to sort of hold it at a more statewide level. But then you then probably it'd be a student's opportunity to through social media, connect with students across the state to let them know it lives there. But um, thank you for sharing those great ideas.
Yeah, thank you for the idea about the association there. That sounds like a great outlet to be able to link at least part of the idea into the big piece, because it kind of is, in my head, it's kind of like one big puzzle, but I'm kind of like taking bits and pieces of and trying to fit together. So yeah.
Jenna?
Thanks. Thanks, Caleb. I appreciate your your wonderings about how everything pieces together and how people get information. It reminds me of the conversation that Gray raised around Voice State. It's like, if you know, you know, but it's not always accessible to every high school student. Um, or schools don't promote things in the same way. I'm thinking about can, maybe if you've connected or to kind of reach out to V S A C, Vermont Student Assistance Corporation, they hold a lot of information and um, they have the availability and resources to reach all students across schools. So I think you have great feedback that they probably want to hear and maybe work with you around what a real student focused campaign would look like to get kind of equity and information sharing across all Vermont schools.
Yeah, I do work with, I do work with upward upward bound a bit, so they are kind of intertwined a bit. So that would be a good idea with a mix of both.
Tammy? Hey, it's Cam. Those are great questions and it's one of the things I'm already appreciating having you on the board. Did you ask good questions and you're thoughtful? So thank you for that. I put a note in the chat. Um, there are some organizations around that partner with students in schools around exactly these issues. So like C F E F schools and and others. So if you want to reach out, I can partner up with you on sort of making some of those contacts. But the other thing I thought that was really important that you mentioned is that, you know, not everybody knows these things. And I think that's a larger issue that the board needs to keep in mind. Vermont has one of the highest graduation rates from high school and one of the lowest rates of post-secondary transition in the country. So lots of kids graduate from high school, yet one of our transition rates to post-secondary education is in the post-secondary education, not just college, right? That includes all forms of post sec, is one of the lowest in the country. So I think you've sort of put a put um a story and a face and a conversation around a really important and alarming statistic for Vermont that as the state board and the agency, we need to really be thinking deeply about. So thank you for that.
And Caleb, I'm wondering, does your school um have like a weekly email or weekly calendar where they put out, you know, now is time to sign up for SATs if you want to take it on this date? Now here's a list of scholarships with the deadlines um for students who want to apply.
I don't believe my personal school does it. Um, I know that upward bound usually in their newsletter, they'll put like, if you're a freshman, this is what you should do. And they have like a page letter of like classes, things that you might want to get ready for, and the same thing for each class, so on and so forth. So I think something like that could be really useful in schools, just like a physical paper format, so it's accessible to everyone in the school and not just online where it's not necessarily announced.
Yeah. So I think there are some really good resources that have been mentioned where you can pull in that information. The other thing I'm thinking of is the school where my kids went. Um, I mean, actually, I I thought they did a really good job of um sending out weekly emails about, you know, here are some scholarships that are coming up, you know, here is college information night, here's um. So I'm happy to put you in touch with them, you know, for the structure. I mean, obviously, I think some of the the scholarships wouldn't be relevant because you're in a different part of the state, but as far as the structure of, you know, the calendar of events with um SAT and SAT prep for students who want to take that. Um, you know, they would definitely have the format that I think could be shared with you and then you could sort of tweak it to be customized for um your school and your school's needs. So again, I'm I'm happy to make that connection if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
Sure. Tammy?
Yeah, I, the one other thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, the research is pretty clear that it's not just the the student, it's the family that is very integral to decisions about pursuing post-secondary education, but also navigating the process. And so I would just highlight that also, Caleb, particularly since I know in your school and your district, there are real efforts for homeschool communication, but also to bring families and parents into the conversation. Um, and so I would also encourage you to sort of think broadly about that, because the research is pretty clear that students try to do it on their own. Oftentimes is not the best strategy, that this needs to be a family effort or a community effort to build systems and structures around that. So just another bit of tidbit from what we've learned in the field about what works and doesn't work.
Yeah, I I absolutely agree, especially around here where, you know, families are and not only families, but also just like towns as a whole are pretty far spread out. It's very integral that families are involved, not only in their own child, but their community as a whole's process. Because our school is very heavily, sorry, and your school is very heavily, our school is very heavily influenced toward trade school and agriculture, things like that, because of how rural we are, I think. Which I think is a good thing, especially with our access to the North Country Career Center, that has an extra level to it.
But those kinds of, those kinds of home que, homeschool communications are particularly important for students who are first generation post-secondary education students and students who experience economic disadvantage. So thank you for all the good work you're doing. Welcome to the board. Really glad to have you.
All right. Um, Lyle, last comment.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think this is just overall an equity issue that we're we're hearing about right now from Caleb, because there are schools that knock it out of the park when it comes to creating systems that introduce students to things. Um, sometimes it's just a lack of personnel or uh I don't know what, but um it's something that um, we should just keep at the forefront around equity.
It's a good comment to go out on. Um, thank you. Um, and Gray, Caleb, thank you both for um sharing with us what's going on um in your schools. And um, this is a really good conversation. Thank you. All right, um, this brings us to the interim secretary's report. Um, Zoe, I will turn it over to you. And I'm just going to acknowledge we we are now forty minutes off schedule, uh, which I just flag again, because I know that we are um, we have a packed agenda. Um, but I'm hoping that we will be able to get through um before we end our meeting today.
Good morning, everyone. Um, in my opening remarks, I'll provide updates, leadership updates on the Agency of Education and share progress on our Listen and Learn Tour, along with um highlights around Read Vermont, uh, which was formally launched uh this month. Um, also briefly um address some of the updates related to topics that were introduced through the students um report. So thank you for bringing up many important topics um related to the cell phone policy, school safety and college and career readiness. And then I'll conclude by just providing some very high level um updates regarding other important committee work that's happening uh to inform policy considerations in the um education space. Um, so as you noted earlier in your meeting, um Heather Boucher um has moved on from the Agency of Education to pursue other professional endeavors. Um, and I thank her for her contributions to the agency and to Vermont students for the past nine years of service. Um, so really uh wish her well. Um, and I know we'll say, continue to stay in contact. Um, and it as part of this transition, um, we have appointed um two uh new leadership roles and wanted to take the opportunity for them to be able to um introduce themselves briefly so that you can put a name to a face. Um, so the interim deputy um secretary of education will be Jill Briggs Campbell. I'm really excited to work with her um in this new capacity. And also interim uh deputy or interim CFO will be Sean Cosino. So um Jill, if you could just um briefly come on and and share um just one minute, a little bit about your background.
Sure, sure thing. And folks that we've uh, we've met before virtually, um, when my team, including Courtney O'Brien, we presented on District Quality Standards last year and probably on facilities and school construction as well. Uh, so I've been with the agency for four years. I started in March of twenty twenty uh and immediately was put on uh COVID response work. So my work at the agency was focused um almost immediately on sort of supporting school operations, uh, including the COVID testing program. Um, and I also uh managed the uh five hundred million plus dollars of COVID emergency funds as well. Um, you know, backed by an incredible team at the agency. So we're coming to the end of of uh both of those pieces of work, um, which is fantastic. Uh, my work has moved uh largely into supporting school district operations. Uh, I lead a uh have been leading a small but mighty team that manages school facilities. Uh, we're involved in the School Construction Task Force and Working Group. Um, also working on school safety. So uh some of the comments from some of your students uh today, uh I was diligently taking notes and Zoe will speak to some of the work that we're doing in that space to um really understand the student experience of school safety and security. Um, we also work uh on a variety of health initiatives with partners uh in other agencies and really our mantra is bringing coherence to the many initiatives um that our schools are trying to grapple with. We work really closely with our our V partners. So Sue and uh V S A Chelsea and Jeff and Jay Nichols uh are very familiar and on speed dial for me. Um, and then uh most recently really supporting the agency's work around the Listen and Learn Tour, which you'll get an update from Zoe and the the work that we have underway there. Uh, supporting the Education Commission and of course the construction working groups. So a lot going on. Um, and uh my my focus is is very much on um always really supporting school districts. I work very, very closely with superintendents and business managers and other folks in the field and really value those those relationships. Um, my, I always sort of ask the question, are we breaking something before we we send out a new policy, a new initiative, a new strategy? I always want to ask the question. Are are we going to break something that we don't know about? So we'll continue to do that. Look forward to working with all of you and and the work that you do. And I'm sure we'll be spending a lot more time together. So thank you so much for a little time this morning.
Thank you, Jill. Um, and really excited to continue working with you on these big initiatives. I appreciate the expertise that you bring. Um, at this point, I'd like to allow Sean Casino uh to introduce himself. He formerly served as our deputy um chief financial officer.
Well, thanks, Zoe. Yeah, I'm Sean Cosino and I've been at the agency for quite some time in various roles and most recently um heading up the business office. Um, but I'm looking forward to serving as interim CFO um and helping, you know, do what I can while I'm in this role to keep things going on the finance side um of the agency. Um, thanks for giving me this time.
Thank you. And I'm very excited to work with Jill and with Sean on some of these major initiatives that we're moving forward and wanted to make sure that you were able to connect with them briefly on this call as they'll continue to be engaged in this work. Um, and also a resource to the board, um, as we continue to explore these really important educational topics. Um, regarding our Listen and Learn Tour, we're really excited that we're moving into the second phase of this really incredible um initiative where we are really gaining invaluable insights. Um, to, as a way of background, the Listen and Learn Tour is structured into uh three phases. The first phase was to really focus on the data and some initial reporting. Uh, so last month we did, or actually, yeah, in August, we released the state profile report. Um, in that report, it shares broad state level trends, looking at educational, um, a number of educational indicators from student enrollment and performance to um staffing and expenditure, along with some other indicators to give a broad view of our current state of our education system. Um, this is the first in a series of reports. Um, the next phase of our reporting is really looking at some regional nuances. And then we'll be engaging in what we're describing as topical reports, which will dig deeper um into specific content areas, including special education, education finance, college and career, school safety, a number of other and mental health. Um, so a number of um indicators that we know are going to be really important for us to dive deep into the data and the research um as we explore different policy recommendations um in these content areas. Um, so hopefully many of you had an opportunity to look at the state profile report. Um, and I'm happy to entertain questions that you might have around that data. Uh, but it certainly has been um really helpful in identifying and validating some of the trends that we understood um within our education system and also identifying other areas that we need to have further exploration um and inquiries to really understand um the nuances of our system. Uh, we've been very uh careful to share that that report should not be used as a sole source of decision making, um but rather is the beginning of grounding um our strategic planning as an agency and data, evidence and facts um to really help us um move forward. It's also very helpful as we're engaging in broader conversations with the commission on the future of public education, so that we really are centering that work um in a deep understanding of our current state. Phase two of this work is engaging with our educational leaders in a planning capacity. And I'm really excited that we've launched that work this week. Uh, we have two regional planning sessions. These sessions um bring together a broad cross section of leaders, including superintendents, principals, curriculum directors, business managers, um and school board members to engage deeper in this conversation. Those planning sessions are structured by region. We are using the regions as defined by our regional, our superintendent's associations. Um, and they've uh really excited, we had our first one yesterday and it was quite productive. Those sessions are structured to actually look at some of the data we shared in the state profile report, but taking it to another level and looking at regional trends. Um, we're working through that data with the teams um to provide their, get their input and guidance um as we're looking at that next level of analysis. And then we're breaking up into three groups that are organized around kind of the emerging priorities from the agency strategic plan um to really look at um mental health, um student mental health and how schools are supporting that. Um, so really thinking about how we can drive academic performance and also expanding college and career readiness. Um, within the board session, we're really focusing more around the budget and understanding how the agency could provide really focused data to support decision making at a board level and also identifying the areas where we can provide support from um moving into this next um budgeting cycle. Um, we also are capturing input from our regional education teams around what would be most important to bring into these broader community conversations? What information do we need to bring to kind of ground this discussion? And and also what would be beneficial input for education leaders to receive from the community at large as we're moving forward with our planning? So the Listen and Learn Tour is to, is part of the agency's strategic planning process. Uh, the agency, I I welcome and appreciate the questions from the the public around the strategic plan. Um, the reality is the agency has not had a strategic plan for many years. Um, and the Listen and Learn Tour is designed to um uh really guide that work in a way that's data driven and participatory. Um, so we certainly have identified emerging priorities within our plan based on the data. And we're validating that as we're working with our education leaders and the community, not only identify the areas that we need to focus on, but to get really concrete around the role of the agency and providing support that's going to help move the needle and really in working with our our school districts and supervisor unions across the state to do this work in a way that is going to address the educational priorities of communities um in all parts of Vermont. Uh, so we're really excited to be engaging in this work. After each regional planning session, we will be sharing a summary of what we learned and some of the insights that um that came up. And it's also a process for us to to validate and that dat- data and be concrete around the metrics that we're working with, how we're defining those metrics. So they're all really consistent as a state in moving forward to um how we're defining on these terms, how we're calculating and evaluating these metrics and really have a clear understanding um of our current state of education system. So it's it's been really illuminating and very interesting uh to be engaging in these conversations. Um, as part of this work, so as part of the agency developing our strategic plan, uh, we are looking about how do we align and realign um our work to support the biggest needs of the field. Part of that is also looking at positions um and looking at ensuring that we have the right scope of position and that they are situated within the right level of the organization uh to support the needs of the field. Um, and that is also intentional explicit work that needs to be aligned around the priorities um of of our of our state um to best maximize and leverage the expertise and the resources we have at a state level um to really elevate outcomes um in education. Um, so another key initiative that we've rolled out uh this week is Read Vermont. Um, so this is the agency's support of implementing Act one thirty-nine in the And it is a comprehensive statewide effort to help promote literacy outcomes. We are really excited to be engaging in this work and very fortunate to be building on a lot of the suggestions that we've heard from the advisory, the Literacy Advisory Council, around what would be most important in the field. So this work through Read Vermont will provide extensive professional learning support along with job-embedded coaching in the field to really work and engage with our leaders in providing resources also to families and communities. So more information to come on Read Vermont. But we're very excited to be launching and rolling out this new initiative to support the field in ways that they have been asking the agency to help alongside in achieving our shared goals. In terms of a couple of updates related to the topics that our students brought up, and I really want to thank them for their report because it's really critical that we hear from students as we're really shaping the course of what we're doing at the agency. So related to the cell phone policy, I think the students noted that there's variability with how this is being implemented across the state. So what we're doing at the agency is really trying to understand from a statewide perspective, how we can make recommendations that are balanced in, you know, addressing the mental health needs of students, safety concerns, and also ensuring a focus on academics. As part of our annual technology survey, we have included additional questions revolving around cell phone policy usage in the state. And that will be give us really great input around how we're how that's being implemented in school districts across Vermont. That data will be, the survey will be concluded in September. So that'll give us really important data, along with some of the research we're doing, to make recommendations as we go into the next legislative session. Related to school safety, really appreciate that conversation. And certainly, this is a critical discussion that we need to be having as a state. You'd mentioned the Governor's School Safety Conference, which will be occurring at the end of this month. The focus of that conference is really organizing our recommendations around school safety in ways that are practical and implementable and based on research. And that'll be a really strong focus of the conference. Additionally, the agency has been working with a consultant to engage the perspective of students. And we've organized several focus groups over the past few months to really understand the experience of some of these school safety measures in the context of their their day at school. We'll be sharing some of that information and the findings that we have uncovered through that at our school safety conference. Also, some of what we're talking about with school safety is part of Act 29. And there's, you know, access to school is really defined within state statute and by school board rules. But we do need to understand kind of how we're implementing this across the state. And some of the ability for us to do that is really engaging in this deeper focus and work at our school safety conference coming up. Regarding college and career readiness, this is one of the areas of focus of the agency in terms of our overall strategic planning. And this is a topic that we're engaged in as part of this regional planning to understand how we can create greater awareness of these types of experiences for students and to be intentional about how we can, you know, really create and strengthen pipelines from our schools into meaningful careers in college as well. And then all of this is happening as there's a lot of other work across the state occurring to make recommendations around education policy in very specific areas. So in addition to, so one that we've mentioned is the Commission on the Future of Public Education. Within that commission, there is a focus on education finance, where they'll be exploring some short-term recommendations as we think about cost containment. But I want to call out that the commission has adopted a framework, which is a balanced view of how we evaluate and make recommendations that center those recommendations in an understanding of how they promote equity, education quality, and affordability of our overall system. I think that lens is helpful to bring about as we look at these other areas of focus. There are several other committees that are underway. And as an agency, we are engaged in those committees and really trying to create a thread and through line to make connections so that there's kind of a holistic set of recommendations as we look at education policy. The School Construction Aid Working Group is underway in terms of evaluating the facility needs and making some recommendations to the General Assembly for this next cycle. Also, the Pre-K Committee is wrapping up their work and will be making another recommendation to the General Assembly around opportunities to expand universal access to preschool. The Literacy Advisory Council is reconvening. They are starting up again and meeting this afternoon to really help as we think about implementing a lot of the new literacy legislation to really promote outcomes in that critical area. We also have work happening in the After-School Advisory Committee as we're really trying to think about how do we best leverage funding that we have to create those extended learning opportunities that are going to be very supportive of academic gains and also meeting the needs for childcare and workforce development as well. So a lot of really exciting work underway that at a very high level, I just wanted the board to be aware of because there will be some very specific recommendations likely coming out of all these committees. And part of the work of the at the agency and being involved in these is really making those connections around how it impacts our overall system for for public education in Vermont. So a lot of really great work happening. Excited to be able to share just kind of at the tip of the iceberg what work is underway at the agency now. And welcome and open to any questions you might have for me.
Thank you, Zoe. Tammy?
Hey, Zoe, thanks so much. I don't know if this is a time to talk about your data report or is it under the net, the next presentation? Where's the where's the best time to talk about that?
I don't know that we have a designated time on the agenda to talk about the report.
Okay. Well, maybe that's actually one of my questions. Is there, in your Listening and Learn Tour, how do you sort of, what's the plan for interacting with the full board around those data? And for the Listening and Learn Tour to include sort of the board's voices in that process?
Yeah. I think that's a great conversation. I would love to be able to spend the full three hours talking about this because I think it's really exciting and rich information that I really want the board to be engaged on in a deep level. So I'm very open to how you want to organize that. But I think it would be very productive for us to be able to have some more focused time around this work because it's so critical to really informing the future discussions.
Great. I'm, I think, let's, maybe as board, we can talk about that today under some of our agenda items. The other question I have is, I've gotten a lot of, as you might imagine, I've gotten a lot of emails and questions about the data that you're using for these reports. And the two things that have sort of percolated that I'll pass along. One, that there is insufficient information to recreate the numbers in the report, particularly around special education. And that, the second is, is that many of the numbers in here don't line up, particularly on the special education side, don't line up with your federal reporting. So I think it might be helpful in these reports if you provided a detailed data appendix. I know you say in some sections, we use these data, we do. But I think if we're going to have full transparency and buy-in to these numbers, which is really critical to the work you're doing, that it's going to be important that that data appendix, so that people can actually see and touch those numbers and potentially even manipulate them themselves, is going to be really important, particularly since we don't really have a working dashboard right now. We haven't for quite a while. So just some feedback that I'll share with you that has come my way. I have not tried to rerun your numbers. I don't have time. But I have heard that from a number of people now. And so I just want to sort of, that have contacted me as a member of the board. And I'll just pass that feedback along to you. But I do think it would be great for the board to have a conversation around how we can interact with the Listening and Learn Tour and how the full board can be sort of weigh in and be part of the conversation about the about the work the commission is doing. So thanks, Zoe.
I appreciate that feedback. And one of our, you know, an explicit goal for the Agency of Education is to improve our data reporting and accessibility. And so, as you noted, there's a lot of different data collections that we've done as an agency for a variety of different federal programs and reports. And so what we're trying to do through this process is make sure that we're all really clear on how we're defining each metric, including kind of when that data is collected, how that's collected. If there have been data inconsistencies in the past, this is our opportunity to correct those. And so part of the journey that we are undertaking as an agency is really working with the field to very, in a very transparent way, evaluate the data and make sure that we're clear on what choices we're making also. Because sometimes there might be some questions around data inconsistencies. Sometimes it's a choice around how we're defining that metric and what goes into that definition of that calculation. And so as we're engaging in these regional planning sessions, that's an opportunity for us to unpack that and make sure we're really defining that in a way that is going to drive our work forward. So I hear you in terms of being able to provide even further transparency around what's going into that data. Certainly, there's some issues with suppression, as you know, in terms of FERC and those guidelines. But I do think as we're going in this process with the regions, we are digging deeper. And we will have a re-release as well of the State Profile Report, just based on any of these kind of further clarifications that might be needed as we're engaging in this deeper work with the regions. So we are really intending for this to be a very transparent process with an explicit goal of all of us as a state coming out of this with a really clear and consistent data set that we're using to inform our decisions, our policy, and our work. So thank you.
And I'll just add to that. Thank you, Zoe. You and I are very much on the same page about those things. But I also would add that I would really strongly encourage the agency to rely on the national and the federal definitions that are used around some of these metrics. Because one of the things that will happen very quickly in this space are cross-state comparisons, and it's already happening. And if we are using definitions and metrics that are inconsistent with what other states are using or what the federal government is using, we're going to create some confusion in the field around sort of what these data mean and what those comparisons mean. So in those conversations, I would strongly encourage the agency. And we did that when I chaired the Staffing R ratios Committee years ago to make sure that we were calculating staffing ratios in a way that were consistent with the federal definitions and other states' definitions.
Yep, I duly noted. And part of this work is intended to look at national comparisons. So we are, we're using, you know, federal definitions in terms of that concept. But some of the nuances, as we're talking about how school districts are defined or schools, or, you know, there have been a lot of changes through our policy. And so that's part of what we're getting concrete on is what is represented in that number. But we do adhere to those federal definitions on those data points that are comparable. Where Vermont is very unique in some specific data points, more related to kind of how we're organized, is sometimes where we have those conversations around how are we defining that and who's included and who's not. Yeah.
I don't think these are the, I don't think this is the issue of the disaggregation in terms of the categories you're using. I think this is in use, I think this is an issue in terms of the metrics you're actually calculating, particularly with respected denominators and counts of students. Right, the different, the bouncing denominators that you're using, which you're using different denominators for different calculations are confusing and they're inconsistent with how the federal government calculates many of the numbers. And I think that's going to create challenges for you and others as they use these data for creating cross-state comparisons. So, you know, I understand why some of the choices are being made with respect to denominators. But it will, I think it is already creating confusion and it's going to continue to create confusion.
Yeah. So I think, you know, part of our work is, to your point, is making sure that we're really clear around how these metrics are calculated and bringing transparency to that and ensuring that they are comparable. I think our intent for this report is to guide planning, right? And as part of that effort to guide planning, there may be some iterations as we get to a state of really making sure everyone is clear on how these are calculated. So certainly, that is part of the work is bringing more transparency to this. So there's absolute clear understanding and we're very committed to doing that.
That was a thanks, and then Rich, and then Kim. I was muted.
Thank you. Zoe, just had a quick comment. So I guess I got invited by the RSU to go to your meeting in Springfield. And I noticed you had some, you had some breakout groups, mental health, academic proficiency, college and career readiness, and then school board-specific coordinated through Vermont School Board Association. And I noticed, like, when I reviewed your report, there was a lot of stuff about, a lot of stuff dealt with finance, but there's no, nothing about finance. And when it was, we actually discussed it at both the school board and at the Executive Committee of the SU. That was, that seemed kind of like the big elephant in the room and there wasn't any mention of it. So was that going to be covered under a different thing? Or is that not something and you're looking at? And it would just, it seemed like a lot of people noticed that. Thanks.
Thank you for that question. So within each of those breakout sessions, there are cost considerations as we engage in those discussions around specific content areas. So just as an example, with mental health, part of what we're bringing is a preliminary calculation for how we represent the cost of mental health in the school budget. So we are doing some engagement work around that because we've heard that there are increased mental health needs of students in schools. And so part of the work that we've been doing with the field is really trying to understand how we can appropriately quantify that cost on a school budget. So that's an example of within the breakout sessions, there are some conversations around cost. Within the school board session, that discussion is really focused much more on understanding what data can inform decision-making specific to budget and other critical decisions. And we have a lot of conversation in that breakout group to really get feedback around the type of support that the agency can provide as we look into this upcoming budgeting cycle. And the menu of options range in terms of providing education to the public at large that demystify our education finance system and promote transparency around the education finance and our, what their decisions as a taxpayer are as they're going into the budget vote. And also thinking about what specific training or support could be very helpful to school boards or school communities on various education finance topics. So there is a deep dive into that area within the school board breakout session. Additionally, as part of our work with the Commission and the Education Finance Subcommittee, the agency is developing a presentation, which is getting into a deeper review of education finance, cost, and spending. And so we've defined specific metrics that we are going to be evaluating and bringing a deeper dive in by the end of the month in that data. Did that answer your question? So yes, it touches every aspect.
Thanks. Kim?
Hi, thanks. Two things, Zoe. I am wondering, I guess I have some concern that this document and data will be a guide for planning, but it is not being presented in a manner that is consistent with how we're having to report federally. I think that isn't made clear in this document, at least not to me, where we are departing from the norms regarding definitions, where we are subjectively redefining things for purposes of these calculations, or maybe not even subjectively, but we have a different purpose. I don't see a sort of qualifier where the data is departing from what is expected on a federal level and such that we would know that this data is consistent with federal reporting. And for these reasons, this data has been considered differently. And here is the context for that. This document is sort of suggestive of a data-driven decision-making piece and resource. And I'm concerned with these conflicts.
So I think this may be part of a fuller conversation that we may need to have. But the the report is not a departure from the way that we would report our, for federal reporting. There are other areas where we're starting to combine analysis. So for example, we're starting to pull together and triangulate our data in different ways. And so, for example, looking at relationships between spending, performance, need, and size of an SU. So it's, I think the distinction is, it's not different from federal reporting. But what we're doing is we're trying to triangulate that information in ways that give us a fuller picture of our education system and the nuances and the nuances across our state. And so I think that is more of a distinguishing factor than saying it's different than federal reporting. What we're trying to do is really to make sense of that in a holistic way. Whereas I think often what we've looked at is data that's been very kind of siloed in many respects. And so we're trying to pull all that together to understand the whole.
Thanks. I think I'll probably have to leave the data depth questions to our data expert folks. But I understand math deeply enough to understand an inconsistent denominator where is, is going to be problematic. So I, I hear you and it sounds like there's more conversation to be had. But being able to replicate and explain methods, I think, would be important. If this is a tool that's looked at as a guide for planning, as a data-driven decision-making process. So I'll, I'll say that. And then I think my other question is just maybe it is for, it's for Emily next. In that we are indicating in this report, and it could be by virtue of the fact of the date of this report being prior to July 1, 2023, where there was a distinction in approved but ineligible to receive public tuition. I'll ask this question again in the next section. We have been asking for that distinction to be, you know, posted and made clear, you know. For, I've been asking since July 1, 2023. So I, we, one of the pages in here indicates how many approved independent schools we have. And I would take that to not be acknowledging those differences. And again, it might just be the date of this report. If this is ending at June 30th, 2023, I could see where that distinction wouldn't have been made. I just, I will, I'll follow up on that with Emily.
Yeah. So I, I think, and I appreciate all the questions around the report. I would really welcome the opportunity for us to do a deeper dive. I think there's a little misconception around different denominators. So I'm not really sure where that feedback is coming from. But I, you know, assuming that, you know, assessment data is based on those tested versus those enrolled, that would be consistent, for example, with our federal reporting. So not sure where the question is around the different denominators, but I feel that we're having a lot of consistency that if we can kind of go through and make sure everyone understands how these numbers are generated and also how they're already reported to the federal government, that could be helpful to make sure that there is that clarity and understanding of kind of this consistency of the data reporting, while we're also able to move us forward and looking at the information and triangulating that in ways that's giving us new insights. And I think that's kind of the work that we should do as a board that could be really productive and helpful as we're working forward into kind of the next phase of the planning. And I know that Jennifer is probably eager to get onto the board chair, to get onto the agenda only because we're such a really packed agenda. But I really do think it would be so valuable to be able to do a deeper dive and walk the board through those calculations, how the metrics are defined, the consistency with the reporting, and then how we can look at this in new ways to really shape an understanding of what the opportunities are ahead for Vermont as we're engaging in these really, the aspirational work around the future of education for our state. So I welcome that.
Thanks, Mohammed. And then I have one quick comment.
Secretary Sanders, thank you for all your report and a lot coming up for sure. Around this topic, it made me think of our work as Train the Trainer. We're talking a lot about finance numbers, training board members. It really leads me to something that I've been a part of advocating for, which is personal finance to be taught in our schools. Some states have that as a mandatory subject to our gradation requirements. All this language we're talking about finance here, the jargon is really hardly understood by community members themselves. So how can we, as board members, AOE, think of educating our students around these lines already? Because this is a hard topic. It's very complicated. It's not just about buying a house. It's not just about buying a car. It's not, it's much more. Like you can be in a county. How would you know I am a taxpayer? How would you know what that means? It's very important for our students to learn. I'm really urging us all to think about it. And some states are doing great at it already. And even some parts of our counties here in Vermont. So let's try again, when we talk about inclusion in our work about education and equity and education and accessibility, some good intentions are being led already within our state, in some parts of our state. How can we really use whatever positive we're seeing there as a model and really spread it out there? I know part of it is money or most of it. But we need to get there, please, in, in all these projects you're talking about. And thank you again.
Thank you for raising that. I think it brings up some other programmatic considerations as we are engaging in this work. And I think that's why it's important. It's not just about talking about education, finance and spending. It's talking about the quality of the educational delivery and how we're preparing our students for success within school and after school beyond. So I think it's just part of that broader consideration we have to have around what are those competencies? And how do we help to train our students to be successful beyond graduation? Thank you.
So, and I just, I want to reflect. I'm hearing board members would like to have a more in-depth conversation about this. I think that's a great idea that we can put on a future agenda for a future meeting. I do just want to acknowledge this was a monumental amount of work that went into preparing that profile in a very short period of time. And I know that people have been, you know, really anxious to have any reporting for a long time. So I just, you know, want to thank you for putting that together. Certainly, it's a first step. And, you know, with the board's assistance and, you know, feedback from the greater public, I think this is a step in the right direction. Thanks. Any other final comments before we move on? And let me just pause here. I'm sensitive to the fact that board members and members of the public and people who are presenting have other obligations that may exist after this meeting and plans may have been made based on an anticipated end date point. We are an hour off schedule. I'm not super surprised because again, this is like one of the busiest, most packed agendas we've had for a while. But before we move on to our next agenda item, I just want to make sure if board members are able to stay later, because I don't know that we're going to be making up time as the day goes on. I see Tammy shaking her head. We may need to postpone some of these items to a future meeting. I'm just, so I'm not, I don't have any suggestions as to which those items should be. But I think that's the only way I can think of to, to keep us on schedule.
So I'm just looking at the agenda and I see it's 10:30 now and 10:15 is Emily, right? Oh, I'm sorry, Meg. We, I, I missed, I'm sorry. I overlooked item E. I'm, I am quite curious, our role in community schools. I appreciate we have guests coming for that and probably they have prepared. But I'm not sure I fully understand the state board's role in any policy positions or decisions around community schools. We did have a nice presentation from the field when we were up in the Northeast Kingdom and in person. I'm, I'm not sure, in thinking about our very packed agenda, that I fully understand our role in that.
We had asked for a community schools update. And so that's been talked about for the last couple of months, I believe. Since we do-
We did as a board, Jennifer? I'm sorry. I didn't recall that.
It was a future meeting planning to have a community. Because we met at North Country in the fall and then we were thinking, you know, now that they've gotten additional funding, it would be helpful to have a community schools update. I'm not, I mean, since we have invited guests, I'm a little concerned about, you know, bumping them.
But I am able to stay later, so.
Tammy? And I don't want to have a long conversation-
I agree. I agree. It's, it's not great to bump guests. But I, I am noticing that there's a lot of work on the agenda where we need, I'm seeing, I'm seeing discuss, I'm seeing votes and things along those lines that are directly relevant to sort of things that the board needs to do. So perhaps we prioritize that work, not, right? Like we prioritize that work earlier in our agenda so we can work through those things and make sure we have enough time to do the things that require our business, right? And then we can come back to those other items at the end if we have time. Because I'm just noticing, right? Like we've got one, two, three, four, five things on the agenda right now that are discussed slash vote. And that's, that's business we got to do. So that would just be one observation. And so maybe we put those things earlier and get it done. And then we can sort of adjust from there. But I'm open to other suggestions. I'm just noticing we've got some work we got to do. So I'm not sure how to proceed with that.
Could we perhaps postpone items H and J until next month? With my apologies to Meg and Emily, if that's the decision of the board.
I'd be very happy to come back next month or anytime you, you'd like me to come and present. I'm available.
Thank you, and I'm sorry.
No worries.
Can I, can I suggest that perhaps we try and get even an abbreviated version of the Independent School Approval Review Process done? We still have 40 minutes, right, before? Or we have, I don't know, 15 minutes even. I, I would happily shorten our break if we could have an update on that. I feel like we've been asking for the form, the updated form, the updated information, the updated list for, I've been interested in seeing that since July 1 of 2023. So any additional update would be terrific. I know there was also testimony that was in conflict, to my understanding, in January to Senate Ed by Emily regarding the process that is very different from what I understood as a board member, the process would be for making those distinctions between those eligible and those ineligible to receive public tuition. So I really would be loath to remove that from the agenda. But I, I very much so appreciate Mike's willingness to come back and address the other item at another time.
Should we do 15 minutes of agenda item J to at least get the conversation started? And then we might just have to postpone and continue that conversation at a future meeting? Is that acceptable to board members?
That seems to make sense to me.
Okay.
Seems like that strikes sort of a middle road, but I'm curious what other folks think.
Does anyone have any objections to that approach? That might be an easier way to frame it. Okay. Well, Meg, thank you. We will look forward to seeing you at a future meeting. Oh, Gray, I see your hand is-
Sorry, I have a question. I don't necessarily object to that idea, although I am concerned that it won't, like, if we're going to limit it to 15 minutes, I'm just going to say we need to like actually have that as a hard cutoff. Otherwise, I feel like it will be something that, you know, will lead to just lots of discussions. So if we want to do the 15 minutes thing, we just want to be, we want to make sure that we're like 100% after 15 minutes. We're like, all right, sorry, we've got to move on. Because otherwise, I don't think we're going to successfully limit it to 15 minutes.
Would you like to be the timekeeper?
I can be.
It'll keep us honest. All right. Any other comments or objections with that approach? So we'll invite Emily in for 15 minutes. That will get us mostly back on schedule. Okay. So is Emily here to join us?
Hello, I'm here.
All right, all right.
So I have some slides and I think they will take about 15 minutes. And this is working out perfectly. Okay. Well, somebody tell me that they can see my slides.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So here's your-
Hey, Emily, I misunderstood. Did you say your slides were going to take 15 minutes? Because maybe we need to keep the slides, I'm just, I'm channeling my inner Gray here. Maybe we need to keep the slides to like seven minutes so that there's still some time to discuss. What, is that possible for you to do?
Sure. Should I proceed with the slides?
I, I think so.
Okay, great. So here's your AOE update on implementation of the updated rule series 2200, the Approved Independent School Rules. So as far as point in time, I'm beginning with the desk audit that can, that occurred this spring of the 2023 effective rules. So please let me know if you get tied up or if I'm speaking in a confusing way. Because for everyone's information, of course, board members know, we've had two updates to the rules. One that took effect in 2023 and one that took effect in 2024, both on July 1. So that's how I'm going to reference the different rule updates. So to begin with the desk audit, and this might be a refresher of your memory. The Agency of Education developed and implemented a desk audit and series of technical assistance in the form of a survey for all non-therapeutic approved independent schools. The goal of this was to confirm compliance with the 2023 new requirements. These schools received an online compliance document that we previewed, that we showed to the board in the spring and a set of instructions and a spring deadline for submission to the agency. Noting here, just to avoid confusion, that due to the nature of the updated rules, that therapeutic schools were not included in this round of compliance monitoring because the requirements were specific to non-therapeutic schools. So the, the process also included a way to let the agency know that you had reviewed the new requirements. And as a result, an independent school could request to be designated as ineligible to receive public funding. So the documentation was taken in by first the agency's independent school team and then by the agency's special education team to check for those elements of the rules that speak to offering special education services. And a note here that in addition to the agency's activities under independent school monitoring and compliance checks, the agency also operates our general supervision and monitoring system for overall compliance with IDEA. So in addition to the ISTA, the desk audits that we discussed on the prior slide, the AOE also developed a transitional independent school renewal application to address the new rules initially adopted in 2023. Then additional changes were made necessary by the Round of Amendments effective on July 1, 2024. So when complete this transitional application will be sent to all independent schools that already completed and had completed the prior application. So we have an interim period of schools that were reviewed under the prior application that need a bridge to today. The vast majority of those schools had received one site review at the time of their prior application. There are many schools that are therapeutic that also, due to not being part of the ISTA desk audit, lead the agency to believe we need this bridge application to include the therapeutic schools as well. So the transitional application will confirm that all schools meet updated rule requirements to present day, so including the 2024 updates. So this really should clean up the various updates to the rules and get everyone on the same current day page. So here we have kind of how the details of the process will work for what we often call the backlog between therapeutic schools and the non-therapeutic schools. So on the therapeutic side, you see that the independent school team will review their applications, confirm compliance, and either conduct a site visit or work with the school to get a compliant application prior to a site visit or until other steps need to be taken. On the non-therapeutic side, you see they'll get the transitional application. We'll review the applications. If there's any need or further follow-up or any concern about compliance, a site visit will occur. But in all other cases where there's compliance on the application and the agency has no external cause for concern, the site review report will be updated and forwarded to the usual review process, to the board's Independent School Review Committee. Then finally, as I said earlier, this updated application that is now the transitional application also will become the new clean slate independent school renewal application. We will send it out to the schools that are not in that pending review backlog, but just who have not been visited since the new rules were adopted. We will that will represent the agency starting up the regular review process. And also, in addition to all of this, the agency will develop the new annual assurances that are required by the rule, which has a January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five deadline. That's my last slide.
Great. Thank you, Emily.
That was almost exactly seven minutes.
Nicely done.
Which leaves eight minutes for board questions. Kim.
Thank you. Emily, I need to ask for the thing we keep asking for is that there be an updated list of those that are approved to receive public tuition. And as they're ineligible, the March posted list of approved schools makes no such distinction. And I think that that is misleading. I think we've asked several times to see a copy of the revised form since the suggestion that taking a module complies with either contracting with or employing a licensed special educator does not meet the standards of the rules recently passed, and I think would have been a very unfortunate interpretation of how the previous round of twenty-two hundred rules were interpreted and understood by the the board and to have been implemented. So we haven't received that. We've heard about it. They updated form, but we haven't received it. So those are two asks that we've been asking for for a very long time. And then so I think those are just deliverables, and I don't know how we can compel you guys to provide it. But I would really like to see that that would be appropriate since these rules have been well-known before the July one, twenty twenty-three implementation date of the Act one seventy-three and how it impacted independent schools. And this process has been prolonged and has allowed for two tuition cycles without any accountability to those that statute, frankly. And then secondarily, I would like for you to help me understand what you testified in January to Senate Ed regarding a process for those who may no longer be considered to be eligible to receive public tuition by virtue of their either inability or even understanding their limitations, not able or willing to serve students with special needs, having to go through a state board appeal process or something. It was very different than what Dan had described when we were in twenty twenty-two and twenty, you know, approving schools that fall. He said, as these rules become effective, those who are um we can go ahead and approve these schools for renewal in the fall of of twenty twenty-two because they will need to be complying with the rules to continue to receive public tuition effective July one of twenty twenty-three. So that interpretation and what I think our board had understood to be the case is very different than what I thought I heard you testify in January of twenty-four to Senate Ed regarding a process that would be a full-throated repeal process or appeal process for those who are not eligible to receive public tuition.
I'm sorry, which question should I answer first, Kim?
I think the deliverables we can let Zoe speak to. We've asked about those several times, and I'm wondering when those will come. But your testimony is something I think only you can speak to, and it is entirely different than what this board, or at least I, understood and had been told by Dan the process would be for continuation of receiving public tuition required that there was. And I would think even the independent schools community thought that they were giving us attestations before we even asked for them because the agency hadn't done it yet. So can you please help me understand your testimony and what the process will be if schools are deemed to be ineligible by virtue of their inability to contract with or employ special educators?
Yes, so Kim, it's um I'm challenged right now to explain testimony that's not top of mind for me. And from your summary, um, I'm not sure I understand the
Can you just maybe
answers you're contrasting that you say are different?
Okay. Um, speak to how you would describe a process if a school is not contracting with or employing a special educator to be able to deliver special ed services. What is your interpretation of what that process looks like for the state board's role? And they're being deemed to be ineligible to receive public tuition? I know what Dan described. He said, we can do renewals in the fall of twenty twenty-two because even though this rule becomes effective July one of twenty twenty-three, all those who wish to continue to be eligible to receive public tuition will need to be able to demonstrate their ability to comply with that section of one seventy-three. That is what Dan told us in the fall of twenty twenty-two when we were applying approving renewals and new new applications at that time. So that is different than what you had testified. You don't need to necessarily remember that. But what is your what are you telling us now that process will be? If you are finding in your desk audits or otherwise that are coming, you know, late, um, quite late in a process that should have been before the implementation of one seventy-three for independent schools in twenty-three. What are you telling us our role in this process is?
Okay, great. So there are two different paths where let's just imagine a scenario where a school is non-compliant, and that is the end of the sentence, non-compliant period. No other follow-up is due. If the school is up for renewal, the state board may act on a recommendation for non-renewal from the secretary or decide of its own initiative to not grant renewal for a school who's coming before the board in the regular cycle due to non-compliance.
Wait a minute. So can I just stop and confirm what I'm hearing you say? If a school is not up for renewal, which would mean we should have had nobody's whose renewal extended beyond July one of twenty twenty-three. Because the law was changing in our rules, July one of twenty twenty-three. So we had renewals that extended beyond that. We have the status quo that happens when the agency and the state board don't get to renewals. And that would have been wholly inappropriate or inadequate for us to have done at that time if that was the understanding. So what I'm hearing you say, I just want to get this initial context that you're saying. You will consider the withdrawal of public tuition only at a time where a school is up for renewal. Is that what I just heard you say?
No, because my next words are going to be or in the alternative. The other path is that at any time the agency, due to an investigation or findings, can recommend to the state board that there's non-compliance that leads the agency to recommend the board revoke or suspend approval status. And the board takes that up as a question in a hearing format and makes the determination on the agency's recommendation after hearing from the school.
Can I just tuck in with fellow board members and our understanding, maybe Tom? I I had no earthly idea that a law that was becoming effective by virtue of rule July one of twenty twenty-three was going to require that to revoke the payment of public tuition to comply with Act one seventy-three was going to require that the agency initiate a process recommending revocation of tuition. And the state board then takes up a full-throated hearing process. That is one hundred percent contrary to what Dan told us in the fall. And I would welcome, I I don't know, Jennifer, Tom, the three of us worked on twenty-two hundred. This is completely different than Dan had described, or I thought was understood through our process of twenty-two hundred. So I would welcome and Tom, Zue and Jennifer.
Well, and let me just point out, we are at the fifteen minutes. So we may have to leave this conversation. We've had this conversation before where Kim, Tom and I were on the twenty-two hundred committee for both rounds of updates. We fully intended that when the rules went into effect on July first, twenty twenty-three, they went into effect. The expectation was that schools would be complying. I think the process that Emily has described is a way to capture what schools are doing before they're up for renewal. Um, and so that form has been sent out to all independent schools, except for therapeutic schools and recognized schools. Um, and so this is the process by which schools are demonstrating in the first instance to the agency that they are complying with the rules. And if there are concerns that are flagged by the agency, then the appropriate process is the agency then brings a recommend, you know, does its investigation. But that culminates in it bringing a recommendation in the first instance to the state board, twenty-two hundred approvals committee, and it would then come before the full board. So this is the mechanism of establishing clients with the rules that went into effect. Have I said that right?
I just don't see that to be true in the way that it had been discussed before. I don't see that to be in alignment with statutory intent. I don't see it to be in alignment with the rules. It was not in alignment with our questions as we were approving schools in advance of July one, twenty twenty-three, and those questions were very direct. And there was an assurance that this to fit into the categories, th- this strikes me as an ability for the AOE to not have done anything and consequently there be no action to comply with Act one seventy-three. It I am, I'm, I'm just struck. And I, the fact that we're up for time on something that we've been raising issues on for quite some time is problematic. I think that legislators should be upset that the intent was not put into effect when it was there was extra time afforded to independent schools to comply for July one, twenty twenty-three. And if the AOE remains in the middle of this, we don't end up in our role being responsible for approval of schools who are eligible and ineligible to receive public tuition. I remember talking about maybe we needed a slate of schools that were either approved or those ineligible. Do we just adopt a slate of those that are approved because they're already demonstrating they're doing special ed? We've had versions of this conversation, but Jennifer, never once have we had a version of the conversation that described a repeal process that needed a recommendation and a appeal process for each school that may no longer be eligible, rather than them demonstrating their ability to serve students with special needs and thus be eligible.
But Kim, it's it's in our rules that to revoke approval, there has to be a due process hearing.
Um, effective July one, twenty twenty-three, there became three categories of schools. So that is not a revocation. It is figuring out where they fit in those three categories. Right? The law changed, the rules changed.
It would still be entitled to a due process hearing. So I'm going to do, I'm sorry, not Tammy, Zoe, then Rich, then Tammy, and then I think we need to leave it here for today.
So I just wanted to make two points. One regarding special education, that was part of a broader presentation we were bringing today around special education and also the role of the LEA in supporting and monitoring the oversight of delivery of IEP services within independent schools. So that was part of the conversation around that presentation that we will certainly bring forward at the next meeting to have a broader understanding of those roles and responsibilities and the level of oversight and ensuring the implementation of the revised rule series. Regarding the approval of independent schools, I can't speak to, you know, kind of the the prior conversation that you had over, you know, years ago. But I can say as a new leader at the agency, I recognize that there has been a pause on this process. And I am accelerating the review of the independent school approval. And so we're bringing forward today how we are addressing that backlog and making sure that we are doing that appropriate approval and bringing those forward to the board. So just wanted to note that part of this conversation is to say there has been a pause. This is the plan to be able to address that so that we can move forward expeditiously.
Thanks, Rich, and then Tammy.
I I was going to suggest that since we're running out of time, maybe we can submit to the chair in writing in the next week, you know, exactly what concerns we have, what questions, and that can be shared with the powers to be at AOE. And then maybe we could kind of get a written report responding to some of those. There was another meeting a couple of months ago. I I had had my hand up for like twenty-five minutes because, you know, what Zoe just said about the, you know, whatever LEA is responsible for any of those requirements for people with IEPs and stuff. So I do think that we need a bigger conversation, but I think we're running out of time. So I would like to see us, you know, close it off, submit something in writing. Jen, you can put something together, send it off, and then that could be the basis for and a lot of that can be in writing before we meet, then we could review that ahead of time and maybe not have as long a conversation or not need as much time and get everybody's questions answered.
And and to that point, let me just say, if if board members are in agreement with that, I'm happy to receive questions. And to quote Jenna earlier, I will transcribe those questions and put them on one document and then forward to the secretary. I'm happy to do that. Tammy?
That would be very helpful. I just want to share, we want to be very responsive to the questions. I think there's a lot of different questions here that we want to make sure we can capture and appropriately respond to in order to ensure that there is compliance and everyone has an understanding of those roles and responsibilities. So thank you. I welcome that.
I was actually, Rich, you and I are thinking alike. It seems to me that there that having some written questions and some written answers would really help clarify things. I think this has been a discussion that has taken place over a long period of time. And, you know, and there's been a lot of back and forth. It sounds like there was some testimony from Emily. Like, it might be good to just consolidate everything, get a clear set of questions from the board. Let's get some written answers to those. So we all have a static document where there can be no misunderstanding about X or Y. And then let's have a discussion about it because I I mean, I can appreciate, Emily, I'm like you, like I, you know, it's hard to remember testimony from January. So I think all that's fine, but I do think that it would be, and then we could be give the agency an opportunity to be transparent. Give us an opportunity to be transparent. But then I do think we need to prioritize and make sure that we leave a good amount of time on our next agenda so we can walk through those answers to the questions.
Jenna?
Mine's super quick. Um, I agree with what Tammy just laid out. And Rich, I also, if we could get a copy of the transitional independent school renewal application, which is then going to be the application, that would be fantastic because that would help inform some questions. It's and maybe it's posted. I did not see it on the website. And then Emily, your slide just said it was being sent to those specific schools, but also as a member of the committee who's approving schools, if I don't know what the application looks like, it's kind of hard to do. Thanks.
Tammy?
Quickly, sorry. I think Jenna raises a good point. I think that for us to be able to provide questions, we need to see all the materials that have been that have been developed. That would be the applications. That'd be all these things, right? And the assurances. It's hard, right? Like, I think we're we're dealing with information, you know, asymmetry a little bit here. And it could be that in those written materials, many of these questions are answerable. So but we haven't seen them. So I think if Zoe, if you would be comfortable, you and Emily, give us all the written materials. We'll reveal, we'll get you written questions, and I think that might help us sort of moderate this back and forth that we seem to be having around this. Is is that is, can we all agree that that might be a good way forward here?
Zoe, is that, does that work for the agency?
I I think it's going to be very helpful for make sure we're clear on the questions and also clear on process. So yes, Emily and I can work together to make sure we put together the information that's going to be needed to address some of the questions that the board has brought up today. And I do think it's important to have that clarity. So certainly, if you could submit your comments in writing, we're happy to review those and make sure that we can provide comments to those.
So let's break this into two parts, Zoe. Let's break it into a list of items that we need from you so that it's clear, right? And then we can then I'm just trying to make this efficient, right? Because otherwise, we're going to get in this back and forth, and it's taking a lot of time. Why don't we get real clear with you in writing about the documents that we need to see? Why don't we get real clear with you in writing about the documents that we need to see? We'll review, you pass them back to us, we'll review them, and then whatever questions we have, we give back to you in writing. And that way, you've got an opportunity to review the questions. And our questions are not sort of silly questions that could have been answered if we had just reviewed the documents. That seems to me like a really straightforward process.
What, what I was saying is, I heard Zoe say that she and her team were going to put together the documents for us to review. Um, I think what I would then propose is that when those documents come to the board, um, whatever date that is, um, I will then pass that on to the board and give board members one week to respond back to me with questions. At that one-week deadline, I will forward the questions back to the agency for their review. And at that point, after they have a chance to review the questions and prepare a response, then we, we will revisit this at a future board meeting.
Do we think that we'll be getting those forms? And those, I would say, are going all the way back to those that have been referenced every time, whether it's the updated form, the current forms in, referenced in Emily's presentation. That's just a map, a, a sort of document dump, right? So the AOE will get us that in the next week, and then we get you our questions in the next week. And then that allows it to be handled at the next meeting. Is that the timeline you're talking about, Jennifer?
Well, I'm, I'm not promising the next meeting because I don't know how quickly we're going to get documents and how long then the agency is going to need to respond to the questions. Because I'm sensitive, I'm just putting it out there. Um, I know that the agency has a lot going on. I know that this is a high priority issue, but I'm also aware of competing obligations. So I'm not suggesting that the agency is not going to do this, you know, as quickly as possible. But I would like to, you know, build in a little bit of room to breathe and say, future meeting. Um, if it's October, great. Um, I can tell you now, we have a packed agenda for October, too. So I'm just, I'm saying future meeting. And if, you know, however that shakes out, I think would be good.
And so if this presentation is attached to the minutes for this meeting, will we also then have those documents attached because they're referenced in the presentation? Could they be linkable? Like, it just seems like a logical way for that to become part of the public record.
Zoe, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, so what I would, what I have shared and I'll repeat here, we are, I am accelerating this process. There has been a pause, we're accelerating this process. Um, I think what I'm hearing in terms of documentation is making sure there's clear documentation around the process itself and the implementation of the revised rules, along with a request for any backup documentation, um, reference within the slides. Um, there, the transition app is being refined. Um, so within a week, I'm not sure I can make that commitment. I'd have to confirm with the team on the timeline. But I think we can share information that is ready, um, so that the board has that background and context. And I do think it's important for us to make sure that we're having these conversations in a way that's grounded in the, the current state and the information that's available. So we will be transparent in that process.
Thank you. Rich, Tammy, and then I'd like to um, close this off.
Yeah, I, I just, it's gonna be really quick. I was gonna say, in um, I, I know this has been a really frustrating thing for Kim because she's brought it up several times. It's, it predates Zoe, it predates me, it predates probably Emily, I don't even know. Um, but what I would like to see is just that, um, two things. One, that we just set dates right now, and we set a date certain because the problem is, is it's too easy to push things down the road. And number two, that Jennifer, not that I don't trust you or anything, but that just because this has been Kim's little, this has been Kim's thing, she's gone in February, and I think she'd like to see it done before she leaves. Can we just send her, before you send it off, the questions, just let her look at it? So we make sure whatever her concern she has is covered. And it may not take that long in a future meeting, it may be a ten-minute thing, maybe all her questions will be answered, and there's no need for discussion, she may be very happy.
Rich, I mean, thank you for the consideration. I, I hope that this is a concern for all of us because it is um, about complying with both statute and rule. And I may have been most vocal and frustrated maybe by not getting responsiveness on the, these matters well past the date of its concern. But I know probably you as well. Do an LEA, the responsibilities of our local districts to comply with their responsibilities. If this work of the AOE isn't being done, it's difficult and challenged. And so I thank you very much for your consideration. I'm happy to look at anything, but I would trust that I'll ask all my questions, you all will ask all your questions. I need, I, I'd like Jennifer to copy all of us when she sends it along so that we all get to see each other's questions. And I love and appreciate the idea of us having dates certain because, um, to your point, we've been asking about this for a long time for documents that are supposedly in the public domain, but we don't have them. Um, and so I am grateful for your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Tammy?
Yeah, I, just a friendly amendment to the process, Jennifer. I, I do think that, I, I, I think we need to be specific as we can with respect to the documents we'd like to see. And I think that's gotta be the Kickstarter, because this question around documents is really one of the things that we've been circling around for months. And so I think we need to be specific with our requests for documents. And there may be documents that we are unaware of, and I, I trust Zoe and Emily to put those in the pile, too. But I do think there is very specific things that the board has requested several times now. And I know there's a lot going on, and I know, know the process has been stopped and restarted, Zoe. And there's a, I get it, I get it. But I, I'm just trying to be efficient with process here. What I don't want to have happen is we have a protracted back and forth because we still haven't seen the things that, that we feel that we need to see. And again, I, I don't know to what extent this is a concern, but it seems to be a confusion, right? Like, there, there's just been a lot of discussion and confusion around this. It just seems that having the documents be the first step in the process and us being clear what we want to see should, is important at this. So, and I agree with Rich, I think we need some dates on this. This shouldn't, this shouldn't be that hard.
Zoe? And I point out, um, Gray is still keeping track of time, it's been thirty minutes.
I'd like to propose, um, the AOE, within two weeks, will provide a response to the board, the documents, our understanding of the questions and the asks, along with providing up information that is available to date to share. If there's questions beyond that, that will help us to provide more refined responses and information in advance of the next board meeting. Um, and just want to give assurance that we are very much focused on ensuring compliance and are very committed to um, sharing the work that is underway and making sure the board is brought up to speed on that work and that you have opportunity to provide additional questions, um, so that we can be responsive to those. Um, but that would be my suggestion so that we can move things forward, um, being able to be very, um, you know, um, thoughtful in being able to address your questions and allowing you time to additional, ask additional questions before the next board meeting. Would that be?
I know that you need to take on the extra work, Zoe, of trying to anticipate our questions. If you can just give us the documents, we can turn around the questions quickly. So I know that trying to craft questions on our behalf is extra work for you. So if we can get the documents, I think we can commit to turning around questions to you quickly.
Okay, so just to recap, the agency is going to send us documents. Zoe, was the within two weeks, including, you know, what you were anticipating questions? Is it, and again, I'm, I'm just asking so that we're all on the same page. Um, do you need two weeks to give the documents to the board? Or can that be a shorter amount of time because you're just sending documents?
So my thought in, in terms of doing due process in my role is making sure that I'm very clear in communicating and documenting the overall process and timeline and how those documents fit into that process. So I would appreciate being able to have two weeks to be pulling together more of a comprehensive response to your questions.
Okay, so just continuing on with that, Zoe will get us the documents within two weeks. From that time, I will send an email to the board, including the documents, and say, you have one week to get back, to review the documents and to um, send me any questions. I will compile the list, I will copy the whole board and send it back to Zoe. It sounds to me like this will not be on our October agenda um, because I don't think it's realistic to think that the agency will then be able to turn around in a couple of days to get responses that would then be included in the agenda packet. So let's shoot for November.
Um, to have. And with all due respect, this has been going on for so long. I don't believe that this should be difficult to be responsive to. And I think I can't think of much else that is of higher priority than our role in this as opposed to some of the other things we talk about in a packed agenda. So I, I would, I would request that this be slotted for a full conversation at the October meeting.
And I hear that, Kim, and I agree with you that this has been going on, and I, I can appreciate your frustration. But I think where we are right now, um, I can't speak for the agency and their timeline, and I'm respecting what Zoe's saying, you know, considering everything else that she has going on, how long she wants to have to put together something that creates documentation for what has been done and why so that she can get us. I would rather have her do a thoughtful, comprehensive job than a haphazard job that then we continue the conversation on.
You understand that our part in this is about approval of schools. I'll, I'll let Jenna go, but this is effective July one of twenty-twenty-three. I don't know how much longer we should have to wait for this to be properly handled and what our role is in our statutory, both authority and responsibility in this. So I will continue to suggest that this come on the agenda for a full conversation.
Jenna?
I would also like this to happen in October. If the Independent School Approval Committee is going to continue to meet, if there's approvals in the pipeline, it would be imperative that the committee has the information on a timely basis.
Okay, so I think that the agency has heard our concerns. Obviously, we don't directly agency. So um, I, I think you have heard board members communicate that they would like it sooner rather than later with a priority given to putting this on our agenda, October agenda if possible. So I'm going to leave it there for now. Um, it's eleven fifteen, basically. Um, why don't we take a five-minute break, quicker if you can? Um, and then when we come back, we will pick up um, with agenda item K. All right, I'll see you all shortly. A housekeeping issue. You might recall at our August board meeting, um, one of the things that I had prepared that we never got to as a board was just kind of um, going through um, which committees we have and who's on them. Um, I'm honestly glad that we didn't get to it in August because as it turns out, I did a little bit of digging in the last month and discovered that some of our committees are tied to a specific charge. And that charge, some of our committees, I think we've, we've done our work and we just need to retire the committees. That's the first category of housekeeping. The second category are committees whose charge has expired and we need to reconstitute the committee in a way that is relevant. And, you know, I'll just forecast now, it's really just changing the name of the committee and the charge and keeping the same committee members on it. I will get to that as we go through it. This is just high level. And then the third category of committees are committees that, you know, still exist, no changes need to be made. So this is just housekeeping to make sure that, you know, we stay relevant and that we are acting within the scope, or our committees are acting within the scope of their charge. So um, the, the category of um, committees to retire, um, Rule Series twenty-two-hundred update committee, that work is done. We completed that work. So, um, and the charge for that committee was the board's December sixteenth, twenty-twenty meeting. We created a three-member committee to examine the need for additional changes to Rule Series twenty-two-hundred, not related to special education as it applies to independent schools and to propose them to the board for approval. Since that work has been completed, I am proposing that we disband the committee. So I would entertain a motion to retire the Rule Series twenty-two-hundred update committee that was created by the State Board of Education at its December sixteenth, twenty-twenty meeting.
So moved.
Okay, move by Tom, is there a second?
I'll second it, Richard.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, Jennifer, I just want to, I'm not sure where the response would lie, but when we presented to Elkar, they inquired about um, where we recognized in statute to be limitations for the way we approach our work regarding um, EQS twenty-two-hundred, and I think in particular, applying same standards regarding Act one. And I didn't, I am unsure of where we are with our responsiveness to Elkar on that. It didn't hold up approvals, but I'm just um, offering that pause to decide whether or not that would need to be responded to in twenty-two-hundred or could or should be in that it was in the context of that rule and that approval.
So two things. One is um, that discussion at Elkar was a discussion that was raised among Elkar committee members about whether they should send an invitation to the board to respond to those questions. So they have not yet sent anything to the board. There was no decision at the Elkar hearing to do that, so there's nothing currently pending. But I think the second point is, to the extent that they are asking about differences between twenty-two-hundred and EQS, I'm not sure that needs a twenty-two-hundred response, I think it could be a board response. So I don't think it would hold.
Okay, I, I guess I, we maybe didn't get anything official. I, I thought I heard them specifically ask for that in the public meeting. And then we, when we, um, they broke after our approvals, they came out the chair and um, the board member or the committee member who had raised it came out and said that we could offer them a less formal, like memo-style response to their inquiry. So maybe they weren't anticipating needing to send us a formal response. Uh, that is my takeaway from those, being in those conversations. And, but I'm also hearing you say that would be able to be handled by the board and it would not need to be handled by twenty-two-hundred.
Yes. Any other comments? Okay, you've heard the motion, it's been seconded, if there's no further discussion. All those in favor of retiring the Rule Series twenty-two-hundred update committee that was created by the State Board of Education at its December sixteenth, twenty-twenty meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um, next is the Ripton Status Report Review Committee. This was created by the board at its June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Um, we established a subcommittee to review the Ripton Status Report that will be submitted by the Ripton School District on or before July twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Consult with members of the Ripton School District and other individuals and entities, including the Union School District and the Agency of Education, and prepare a proposed determination of preparedness to be considered and voted on by the full board at its August twenty-twenty-two meeting. Again, this work has been complete, so um, I would move that we disband the committee. And, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll let Rich and Mohammed decide who seconded it.
Mohammed's turn.
Rich, please go for it.
All right, all those in favor of retiring the Ripton Status Report Review Committee that was created by the State Board of Education at its June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Um, the next one is the Secretary Search Committee. Um, at the board's August ninth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, we established a committee to conduct a search for a new Secretary of Education and to make recommendations to the board for its selection of no fewer than three candidates to be proposed to the governor. We completed that work last fall. Again, I believe we can disband the committee pending further charges from the legislature to do anything um, otherwise. So with that, I would entertain a motion to retire the Secretary Search Committee that was created by the State Board of Education at its August ninth, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Lyle, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tom. Um, discussion, Tammy, I see your hand is raised.
I'm just gonna note that we have an interim secretary currently, and I'm wondering if we are premature disbanding that committee. I, I know you just said that we're waiting from some charge from the legislature to sort of re-up a search. Are we confident that we are not going to get a charge from the legislature to re-up? Are we confident that we are not going to get a charge from the legislature to reopen that search?
I've heard nothing. I'll be honest, but you know, my, my thought was that committee was comprised of Lyle, Jenna and me. If we get something from the General Assembly requesting that we reopen the search for a secretary, I think we could easily vote at that time to create a new Secretary Search Committee that may have different members on it. I'm sensitive to the fact that Jenna's going off the board in February. Kim?
I guess I had a similar pause because the statute is unclear who initiates that process. What is clear is that it is our process. So I know you had interpreted it to need to have begun by a governor's letter. We did that process. The Senate didn't confirm. And so we, I don't, I don't know. There is nothing in statute that tells us where the authority or it tells us it is our authority to do that process. It doesn't tell us how or where that begins. So I guess I would be a little bit loathe to disband the committee, even if that meant, and it's happened before, that committees' membership change as people go off the board. It happened with EQS, for instance. So I'm not sure why we need to disband the committee. And if the committee is differently constituted because there are different members, I think that's also fine. But it would make sense that to the extent it continues to exist, there's also a sort of a historical knowledge of process that could be beneficial. I guess my recommendation would be that it not disbanded. And so I'll probably vote against this if we decide that's what we're doing.
Tammy?
I admittedly have a more general question, which is it seems to me that we're, what I've seen in the list so far, we're talking about, like, we've had some special purpose committees. But I am curious whether or not we are distinguishing between sort of standing committees and special purpose committees. And it seems to me that perhaps the secretary, the secretary search is not a special committee, that's a standing committee. We may have, right, and I'm wondering whether as a board, we need to talk about that before we sort of start crossing things on and off a list. Do we want to talk about what we think should be our standing committees and then true that up against what we have right now?
Well, so this was the last committee to retire. And then what I'm focusing on are committees, the next bucket are the committees for which we need to clarify the scope. So, you know, just to give you guys a heads up, EQS is done based on the way that committee was created by the board and the authority by which that committee existed. So we need, in my opinion, we need to retire what has been called the EQS committee and create a new standing committee that is going to be focused on education quality standards and how that slots into EQS. So that's a pivot that kind of, I think, answers part of your question. I'm not sure the Secretary Search Committee needs to be a standing committee because it is possible that a secretary could, you know, be in that position for a number of years and that might, that that tenure might be longer than members on the board. And I think, you know, historically, what has happened is we've received a letter from the governor. I think there was some statutory update that was made where, you know, there would be an indication from the General Assembly. But be that as it may, there would be some direction given to the State Board of Ed that it needed to conduct a secretary search. And that feels to me like an appropriate time for us to constitute a committee. But that's just me.
I don't know that. I don't know that. I, I hear you and I actually, and I agree with you. I, I, I think, so let's, let's separate the Secretary Search Committee from my comment for a minute. I do wonder, are we going to have an opportunity to have a larger conversation about what our standing committees should be, right? You know, we're kind of reacting to what we have right now. I'm trying to be more forward thinking, sort of coming out of our retreat and sort of, you know, sort of where do we want to go as a board? What should our standing committees meet? And then obviously, we would have special purpose committees as they come up. Is that going to be part of today's discussion? Because it seems like we need to have that discussion as a part of sort of this larger conversation.
Well, I would agree that that is a conversation that we need to have. I was not planning to have that conversation today, and I think that's something that maybe should be handled in the first instance in what is up until now known as the Roles and Responsibilities Committee and then bring that before the board. But I think what I'm really trying to do is tidy up the universe of what we're doing before we start thinking in addition to what else should we be doing. Does that make sense?
Thanks for clarification.
Lyle?
I would like to move the question because my opinion is that we have done what we said we were going to do. We're presupposing what the Senate and/or the governor will do if we keep the committee intact. So I think we've done our job and we move on.
Okay. Do we need to vote on moving the question? Rich?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion to move the question has passed. And now we have moved and seconded the motion to retire the Secretary Search Committee that was created by the State Board of Education at its August 9, 2023 meeting. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay.
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 Okay, so I think since it's not unanimous, the proper procedure is that Maury needs to do a roll call.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Mohammed Jobe? He's gone, right?
No, Mohammed's here.
Thank you. Richard Werner?
Aye.
Tammy Colby? No. Gray Furon?
Nay.
Lyle Jepson?
Yes.
Kimberly Gleason?
Nah.
And will the chair be voting?
Yes, and the affirmative.
Six, three.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next bucket of work are committees for which we need to clarify the scope. So again, I'm just going to forecast. We've got our Roles and Responsibilities Committee and our EQS Committee. Both of those, and I will go through in detail, but both of those, the charge that we use to create those committees has expired. And what I would like to do is reframe the charge and reauthorize the committees, which is necessarily going to involve calling them by new names. So there are going to be three motions. One is going to be to retire the committee. And then the second set, because they go together, set of motions, is what we've done when we've stood up other committees, which is to create the committee and then authorize the chair to appoint members. And I'm telling you now, unless anyone wants to step off those committees, my thought was to just put the same members that are currently serving on those committees back into those committees.
And if that's true, Jennifer, can I just ask, in, could the motion be then that rather than authorizing the chair to determine the committees, the chair recognizes current standing members of previously named committees will be currently named on these newly constituted committees? I'm thinking of the institutional knowledge from years of EQS. Not personally, I understand my term will be up potentially before. I'm hopeful that since we've had some of these standards for more than a year now, these standards will be completed in my tenure. But appreciating that there may be changes with changes in membership, the, I would be more comfortable rather than it being our offering authority to the chair to assign those committees. You're discussing them as being a reframing, that it would be, I would prefer that the motion was related to naming current seated members of previously named committees to these committees.
So, and I, I hear what you're saying. My response is when current members roll off of those committees, if they are named by name, and that's all the board has given the authority to the chair to do, then we would have to revote when board members drop off and new members come on. I would prefer not to do that. That is historically not the way we've done that. I think, you know, if, for instance, Kim, if you drop off in February and someone wants to come on to take your place, it would be nice just to be able to have that person express to me, hey, I want to serve on the committee, and then I can just put them on.
Yeah, I'm thinking there must be an artful set of language that would do both and. And I think one of the things I'm sort of thinking about is the roles, current Roles and Responsibilities Committee having been, I don't want to describe it as overpopulated, but overpopulated, you guys initially had too many people. You had appointed yourself additionally to the Roles and Responsibility Committee, which puts you guys at a quorum of the board. And, you know, Gray had to step off of a meeting to not violate a proper public warning. So I, I would appreciate that we be able to indicate the transition of responsibilities for those previously named on these boards to then, on these committees to currently serve and future membership as necessary to be proposed to the full board by the chair. I think that that's even in good practice, that we are all able to sort of hear and, and know who's being assigned to what in a public meeting.
Well, I've always been really clear about who's on the board, and that's actually the third bucket of work because I'm getting ahead of myself, but it has never been a mystery who's on the board. I'll just, or on a committee. I'll just put it that way. Rich, and then Tammy?
I, I thought that the board chair, when a committee's formed, the board chair gets appointed membership anyways. So I don't know that we would actually have to vote for the members. I think you would just appoint them, but maybe I'm wrong.
That was my understanding as well. Tammy? And then Lyle?
So I'm going to piggyback on Rich. I, I guess, is, is that, is that written down somewhere? Right, like, so, Rich, is that in Robert's rules? Or is that, is that something we, is that an authority that we've given the chair over time? And maybe to make, I'm listening to all the conversation. Perhaps the way we proceed is, you know, we, we have committees and the slate of people on those committees comes before the full board, the chair brings in. We all vote and agree, and that's how we move forward with that. And then that sort of takes in Kim's ideas, it takes in Jennifer's ideas. But I don't, I don't have Robert's Rules of Order in front of me. Rich, I see you're checking. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it is somewhere, and I don't know if I'll be able to find it because the book is big. But even though it's small, but I, I think, you know, the board has the authority and the ability to kind of set the boundaries of the committee. So say, you know, we want two board members and three public and 16 dwarfs or something. But I don't, I don't think we actually name it and we, so I will look that up. But if I can't find it, I think we should just trust in our board chair. That's why we made her the board chair.
Lyle, and then Mohammed?
I concur with Rich. Other boards that I'm on allow the chair to point the committees and even the chair of the committee or that person generally that gives the committee the option to pick their own chair. So I concur with Rich and hopefully we'll find something. And if not, I would just like us to move forward with that if we could.
Thanks. Mohammed?
In addition to what Lyle just said, I was going to say there's also a factor of capacity. Understanding that, say, one of, one of the members are in three different committees and there is a need to open a new or form a new committee, then you would think of someone who has more availability to respect their time and be more effective in committees in which they're already serving, not to overload either individual. I think that is a huge factor as well.
Thank you. Jenna?
Just trying to think this through a little bit because I think we've had different practices in the time that I've been on the board around the, how people are approached, how people are asked. And I think if the ask of people to be on committee is from the chair and it doesn't happen at this meeting, and then the committee is announced at the meeting, what would be the process if somebody wanted to be considered for a committee that they weren't appointed to, right? Like, I'm not clear on how, if it's an appointment that happens not at the meeting, the ask is already made, then what would be the process for somebody to then say, oh, I, I wish I was considered for that?
Rich, do you have an answer to that?
I do, and it's going to, where's Gray? Because he's going to have to cut me off because it's like three, three or four pages. But there's different ways of appointments to the committees. And when you, when you charge the committee, you have to kind of state how you're going to do it. So you can have election by ballot. You can have appointment by the chair. You can have nominations by the chair. I think there was one more. No, those are the three. Oh, appointment by adoption of a motion, naming members of the committee. So really, any of the four ways are, can be, be proper. But I would, I would really like to recommend, I mean, consistent with every other board I serve on, you know, the board can set the makeup of the committee. And then I think it's the, we should let the chair, and I would make that part of, or we can add that to any motion the chair gets to appoint. And if people have interest, they can express their interest to the chair. And then she can decide. She's got the overview of everything that's going on. And I don't think we've had any issues in the past.
Thank you. Mohammed, are you, do you have another comment?
That one was overdue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the first committee for which we need to clarify the scope is our Roles and Responsibilities Committee. So at the board's June 16, 2021 meeting, we constituted a committee charged with developing recommendations for the full state board to consider in response to the requirements of Act 66 as it pertains to roles and responsibilities of the State Board of Education and the Agency of Education. That charge has now expired. So what I would like to do is to update the committee's charge for two purposes. One, to tie it to the goals of Act 183 of 2024, to examine the role and function of the State Board of Education, to better serve the recommended education vision of the state. And second, to allow the committee to continue processing feedback received at the board's August 21 retreat. My thoughts with that are with regard to the commission, changes are imminent, and I want to make sure that we have a voice with proposed changes to the role and function of the State Board of Education. I would propose that that work begin in a committee and that that can really do a deep dive and then bring its recommendations before the full board. We need to analyze our role and function and be prepared to make recommendations to the commission as to what we think we need to change, why it needs to change, and how it needs to change. This will be a time-consuming and thoughtful process. So I would like to change the charge of the committee and also rename it to be clear that we're tying this work and, and sort of fitting within the umbrella of Act 183 and refer to it as our Board Roles and Functions Committee going forward. So before I entertain a motion, Rich, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just going to make that motion.
Okay.
You said, and I was also going to add that the chair be be authorized to appoint the, the members of the committee.
Okay, so we have three motions here to accomplish this work.
I'm making it all in one big motion.
I'm going to keep them separate just because I think it would be easier. Because then, I mean, board members might agree with the first motion, but maybe not with the second. And then, you know, we, we can sort of tease that out a little bit. But I think the first step is to entertain a motion to retire the Roles and Responsibilities Committee that was created by the State Board of Education at its June 16, 2021 meeting. Rich, would you like to make that motion?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of retiring the Roles and Responsibilities Committee that was created by the State Board of Education at its June 16, 2021 meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, we have approved the motion. I will now entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for the full board to consider in response to the requirements of Act 183 of 2024 as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education to better serve the recommended education vision of the state.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
By Mohammed.
Oh.
Second ended by Mohammed.
Okay. Any discussion? Tammy?
There was nothing in that description about, a minute ago, you said that the charge for the Roles and Responsibilities Committee was also going to be to address the feedback we received at the August meeting. That is not in the charge you just read.
Correct. Well, it is not.
It is not stated in the charges that you just read.
Let me, let me explain why. Um, because first of all, I believe that the work of our August 21st retreat fits into the rubric of roles and functions. And secondly, I don't want to limit the committee to the August 21st retreat because I, I would like it to be more broad than that. So I think what we're talking about, what came out of the August 21st retreat was the role and function. That was an inward-focused discussion on the roles and function of, you know, how the state board is internally structured. It is also roles and functions looking out in terms of the roles and function of the State Board of Education vis a vis the Agency of Education and other entities.
Then there needs to be an and because 183 has nothing to do with the inward function of the board. 183 has to do with outward function of the board. Well, I, I, okay, then, then I'm gonna propose some language that delineates. So give me a minute and I'll write that up.
Okay. Um, Gray, and then Jenna, and then Kim.
Uh, I don't really understand the renaming of the committee. I mean, I, I mean, I understand like having a new purpose for the committee, but the actual renaming of it seems just kind of unnecessary to me. And, uh,
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I mean, no, you can respond to that.
Well, the reason I, the reason it was named Roles and Responsibilities to begin with is because that was language from um, doop doop doo. Um, Act 66 of 2021. So Roles and Responsibilities is language that was taken from that act. What I've done is, I really don't care. We can keep calling it Roles and Responsibilities, but the reason why I selected Roles and Function is because that brings in the new language that was identified in Act 183 of 2024. That, that was my thought process.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just a language thing, to me, it, I don't really like that we're taking out the word responsibility because that seems like a pretty key word in Roles and Responsibilities. So I guess I would be in favor of keeping the language we had before.
Okay. Jenna, Kim, and then Tammy?
Thanks. I feel like I just hesitantly voted for the first motion to disband the committee with like, um, kind of this thought that everything that you, that was said previous was going to be in the second motion. And then when the language in the second motion, right, to board roles and functions was slightly different, I felt like, wait a minute, is this the same thing we just talked about? So it felt a little, and maybe, I guess, my question, or could you read that again, what you proposed? Because I was listening, because I was thinking, oh, it's gonna be the same thing, and it really felt a little bit different. So I, do you mind, Jennifer?
Smithing, so.
Can we just put it up on the screen? Because it wasn't in our package. So it's really hard to follow motions when we don't have them in advance.
If, um, I'm not sure I can do that on short notice. I can type it. Um, okay, um, I will read it again. And again, I'm just, I was trying to create an umbrella that was broad enough. I mean, and, and to there, there's nothing nefarious going on here. I'm just trying to update the committee so that we are tied into something. And, um, that we can sort of continue the work that we've been trying to do, but just update it in a way that's clear to everybody.
Motion. Maybe I can ask while you're typing, and it might be a Rich and Jennifer question. Um, in response to sort of Gray's questioning regarding the change of name, like, if we were not changing name, wouldn't it simply have been a matter of updating the Roles and Responsibilities charge to be responsive to Act 183 and ongoing board governance considerations or something to that effect? Without having to span or otherwise change the title. Um, because one thing I don't hear spoken to particularly in the second version is the responsibilities to attend to statute. And that has been a concern of mine, that we have been not doing that over many years now regarding our very specific statutory, both authority and responsibility. Um, and I think taking responsibility out of it is problematic. And not mentioning statute in terms of maybe the charge of the work is also, I think, um, a missed opportunity to be clear. So truly zooming out from it, I would have preferred that we um, reaffirm a charge that was more inclusive of the things you were considering, Jennifer, because changing the title seems to, in some ways, actually be changing the intention of this work, at least as I understood it from August with the work we were doing together to do a better job of our own understanding of our own practices.
So I just put in the chat, and I will read this out loud for the benefit of members of the public who might not be able to see it. Um, and I did add in internal and external. I'll just tag that now. Um, excuse any typos. Entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for the full board to consider in response to the requirements of Act 183, 2024 as it pertains to the internal and external role and function of the State Board of Education to better serve the recommended education vision of the state. And I would say maybe roles and functions. Um, I think we could make those plural.
What happened with responsibilities? Did we lose that still?
Well, again, like, it, I really, it.
And reference to statute as well. Those are two things that I think are something you are clear to remind us of where we are. You know, have our guardrails on statute, but what we seem to have paid less attention to is where we are obligated in statute to do things and, and we simply are not addressing those things at all. And so I, I would like to attend to our responsibilities, our responsibilities in statute. And our responsibilities for good governance.
Sure. I don't think this is so limited that it excludes consideration of statute. I mean, I think that is the point of the committee is to consider, you know, all statute and rule of the State Board of Education and then make a recommendation for the full board as to what that should be, um, um, going forward. Jenna? Oh, you're muted.
I see. Thank you. Um, I don't know if that's common. It might be a silly thing to raise, but for the full board to consider. Like, did, would this committee bring bringing to the full board considerations? Would they be voting on that? Like, I'm unsure about the word consider.
Okay.
What that looks like. Um, does it look like there becomes a, um, feedback loop that the information gets vetted through the whole board? And then the committee considers that information and like that internal processes? I don't know, and I don't know if that language should be in the motion because we're not clear of the process, right? The.
Do you, do you have a better word? Because I, I hear what you're saying.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. It's like bringing a, man, I don't have a. Who, Tammy, are you editing in? Oh, yeah. That looks in the chat, there's some editing. Sorry. I don't know if there's better language. I'm just wondering if you, we vote on something without a process, like.
Yeah.
Are we, like, clear on that?
To, um, vote upon, so in response to the requirements of Act 183? To discuss and vote?
Is the only body of this? Oh, go ahead, no.
Recommendations for full board action in response to the requirements of Act 183? I mean, that makes it clear that we are putting forth the expectation that we will reach, you know, a determination on this.
I think Act 183 might be confining to, it like, minimally, I would like to see that the governance and statutory responsibilities move up. 183 is newer and it's, it might be more confining. It may not be. It may be a wide scope based on what comes out of the commission. But in the interim, it would mean that this committee should be working on our improved governance and policies, bylaws, and processes among our work. And I don't, I think, leading with it, um, being confined to this act, to Act 183 feels like not in line with the intention of the previous body of work that this group is doing. And again, I guess I would say it begs the question of why we disbanded one that had a couple less words in it. Um, but maybe encompass what we are talking about.
Yeah, I mean, that, that prior iteration of Roles and Responsibilities was tied to a statute and that work has been done. Um, Tammy did that work, submitted it to the, there was a presentation before the board, went before the general assembly. So I, it is clear to me that Act 166, I'm sorry, Act 66 um, should not be the underlying, um, authority for this committee. Um, I also think that it is clear to me that the commission is looking at, or has not yet, and I want to forecast that, will be looking at the role and function of the State Board of Education. And I think it's imperative that as a board, we are able to go back to the commission with, you know, what we feel is appropriate. So I, I really want to prioritize that work. I think it needs to be done. And I think it would be done without us if we're not a part of it.
Yeah, I think that's, okay.
Add this to the chat, but I'll read it so everyone can see it at home. I'd like to propose revisions to the motion as follows. That we entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for full board action in response to the requirements of Act 183 of 2024 as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education to better serve the recommended education vision of the state and constituting the State Board's governance, including bylaws, processes, procedures, and other statutory responsibilities. Maureen, I put that in the chat so you can see the text.
Can I, um, ask clarity?
And I call on Tom as my grammarian chat, my grammar, grammarian checker here, because I'm doing this in a Teams chat. So make sure that all my commas are right, Tom. But.
Um, can I just inquire, um, the recommended education vision of the state? So we're supposed to, as the State Board of Ed, have a strategic vision for education for the state of Vermont. It's in statute now. And so I don't, I don't actually know what that's referring to, the recommended education vision of the state, like who's recommended, where's it's recommended from?
This is taken right out of Act 183. Um, and I think it is fair to say that the commission is looking at the education vision of the state. And the question is, how does the State Board of Ed fit into that? So that, that's why it's written that way.
But is that language necessary for, are we referencing 183? Jennifer, I guess that's what I'm seeing, hearing Kim say. So here's a revised version.
Well, and the reason I do want to have it in there is because I'm really, I'm not trying to say that this committee is going to be charged with looking at all of Act 183. We are really looking at Act 183 specifically with regard to the role and function of the State Board of Education.
That's right. That's right. But I, when I just heard Kim say, and I revised the text in the chat to drop to better serve the recommended education vision of the state. I don't, I don't know that that's needed because it's implied in 183. I think for what we're talking about is, what I hear you saying is that we want to have language here that charges this committee to respond to the requirements of 183 as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education. And what we have here, right, is additional language that we've heard from the board members that you know, where we add and constitute the State Board's governance, including bylaws, processes, and procedures, and other statutory responsibilities. Again, Maureen, it's in the, it's in the chat.
Oh, um, let me just point out, Lyle has noticed that we do have, um, where is this agenda item? Is this O? The Community Schools Update? No. Yes? Yes, I've seen Lyle say yes. Um, board members, shall we table this for a moment? And come back to this so that we don't keep our guests waiting? Yes? I, I will move that we table this until after the, um, we take up Agenda Item O. Um, and actually, I'm gonna say after we take up Agenda Items O and Q, since, um, I think by the time we finish with O, we will, um, be at the time for Q. So I would table this, um, until we get through Agenda Items O and Q, and then we will return. Um, so that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second, that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, we've approved the motion. At this point, we are going to pick up our Community Schools Update. Um, and Zoe, I will, um, let you do the introductions.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, we're really pleased, uh, to bring a Community Schools Update. Um, I know that there was a request to provide more information on, just on the, the background of the program and also as we think forward around sustainability of community schools. So I'm really pleased to invite, um, our members of the AOE team, along with our partners at, um, University of Vermont, uh, to provide a comprehensive overview of the current community schools program um, and to share some preliminary research findings as we're engaged deeply in this work of evaluating the impact um, on students. So with that, I will turn it over to our team. Um, Johannes, if you would please begin by introducing yourself and then sharing, um, who else will be part of representing, um, the content of this presentation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Zoe, and thank you, board members. Uh, it is wonderful to be invited to speak. We're excited to speak on behalf of community schools generally and community schools in Vermont as implemented by Act 67 particularly. Uh, I am joined today by Dr. Bernice Garnett, who is, um, representing the University of Vermont, who has been an essential partner in the implementation and development of our community schools program. Um, Bernice is in this meeting?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm super excited to be here. Thank you for making time and space um, to hear about community schools and Act 67 implementation. We have put together a presentation that, yay, it's working. Johannes is sharing. And I'm a faculty member in the College of Education and Social Services, and I want to acknowledge my other partners at UVM have been deeply connected to this work. We're listening in as our graduate students in education leadership. So you all are mirroring what they're learning in class. Um, so Peter Knox and Colby Kurvik, and then a former AOE colleague, Jessica Careless, was deeply connected to this work as well. So I'm gonna acknowledge them.
Thank you, Bernice. To run through a quick overview of what it is we're hoping to speak to today. Uh, as mentioned, a, a quick overview of what the community school model looks like, specifically what that implementation has looked like in Vermont as authorized by Act 67. A quick overview of what our development of our, um, monitoring oversight process of those schools has looked like, particularly the partnership with UVM to uh, conduct some research around that implementation. Some of the initial findings and highlights of that work in our initial cohort. Uh, and then finally, a look at what community schools in Vermont looks like in the kind of upcoming immediate. That's this year and the next sort of two to three years. So diving right in, what are community schools? Well, community schools is a model of organization that allows schools, allows us to leverage both the, the physical and the organizational centrality of schools in their communities to serve as a connection point between resources and needs in those communities. The idea isn't that schools step in to avoid and become service providers. The idea is that schools are able to leverage their position to make connections between existing providers and existing needs. Uh, this is done primarily through the person of the community school coordinator, who is a full-time school employee whose job is facilitating those connections. Uh, and it's done in accordance with the community school pillars, which are sort of the large overarching uh, focuses. National Research has four, integrated student supports, expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities, active family and community engagement, and collaborative leadership and practices. Vermont Implementation added a fifth pillar of safe, inclusive, and equitable learning environments. Vermont Implementation added a fifth pillar of safe, inclusive and equitable learning environments. So when we talk about our Vermont Community School Cohorts, this is what specifically we are talking about. We had a competitive grant process, after which we selected five sites as our initial pilot cohort. Within that, we had an elementary school, a middle school, a high school, a K-12 school, and a multi-school supervisory union site. So we're covering sort of the full sweep of organizational models that Vermont schools are using. We recognize this is a relatively small cohort, only five schools, but it is broadly representative in geography and in organization. Ordinarily, when we're giving these sorts of presentations and talking up the work of the community schools, we like to have community school partners and members here to speak for themselves. That wasn't possible today, so we did the next best thing. We have a brief video that we would like to show, which highlights some of the work they're doing in their own voices.
So hopefully that short video gave you some insight into this work on the ground and helped animate the five pillars of community schools that were really articulated quite well in Act 67, which was the policy that was passed in 2021 to support the competitive grant program. It's really an honor and privilege that I get to walk alongside with the folks in these communities doing amazing work. And I did want to stress and highlight that the, the community schools model is not new to Vermont. Although Act 67 was passed in 2021, the values and ideologies of community schools being a place-based, equity-centered model to coordinate services for students, families and communities is really steeped in the vision of public education for Vermont and the legacy of John Dewey. You know, I am a professor at UVM. He's one of the most famous education philosophers, a graduate of UVM in 1879.
I believe Bernice might be having some connectivity troubles, but I can pick things up here. So we, we wanted to emphasize the centrality of this partnership. There's this wraparound opportunity to support our schools from the state education side, but also from this research model side. We wanted them to have this connection to a larger national and international research base, that this isn't sort of a, this isn't a, a, a new and novel approach. This is a, a well-founded, well-grounded, well-researched model that has some real legs. So we did run this as a competitive grant opportunity, but we knew that using a sort of clipboards, collect receipts and metrics approach to monitoring oversight from our national research, we knew that wasn't going to be really appropriate to this community schools implementation. So we developed and implemented what we're calling supportive accountability, trying to make sure that we are maintaining this open relational kind of co-equal ownership of this implementation with our schools. Quite frankly, we are asking our schools to step into spaces where they have not stepped previously. So we felt that it was incredibly important that we create this, this space and this relational model where, where they felt empowered to do that. And they felt that there was sort of permission to, to try novel things and that there was support to attempt new approaches. This image here is a logic model. This is a tool used in implementation science to align inputs, outputs and goals. This is something that we made for all of our community schools projects as part of our kind of network of supports to help them with this very broad, complicated implementation. Bernice, are you back?
I, I turned my camera off. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry, I'm in Waterman where there's like 400 UVM undergrads all using UVM Wi-Fi. So I'm going to keep my camera off to save bandwidth. Thanks, Johannes, for picking that up. And I don't know where I left off, but legacy of John Dewey, and I saw Tammy's comment in the chat. So just to remind you all, Act 67 funds were released in 2021, and it was a three-year grant program, right? Implementation Science is dedicated to understanding how things work, why they work and under what conditions. But we were also very cognizant when we entered in this really beautiful partnership with the AOE and our community school partners, that we wanted to support them where they are and also where the time is in terms of starting implementation in the fall of 2021, in the midst of really significant disruptions still to COVID. So standing up community schools during that time, hiring community school coordinators, that takes a great deal of risk and leadership. So you'll notice the timeline on this chart below really signifies the main activities that we saw happening across the three years of the grant. And the National Research really indicates that the outcomes of community schools and improving attendance and graduation and school climate take five to seven years. So we really wanted to lean in to questions like, what are the experiences of new school, community schools and implementing this model, right? How is the support from the Vermont Agency of Education, which was deeply connected to implementation and technical assistance, aided awardees in implementing the vision? And then what are some of the preliminary outcomes for community schools implementation after three years? So that was sort of our general approach to this supportive accountability and participatory research that we did in tandem with schools, so they felt seen and supported in the work. Go ahead, Johannes. So we were excited to share some emerging themes. The grant is wrapping up at the end of this month, and we have a report due to the legislature in December. And we're happy to come back and share more findings, if that's of interest to folks. But we wanted to highlight a couple themes that are aligned with the National Research on the ways in which community schools not only benefit students, but also the broader community. One thing we saw is that our community school awardees really leaned into existing strengths and existing educational policies and initiatives, particularly Act 77 and work-based learning and project-based learning, to really illustrate deeper learning through community-based partnerships, outdoor and place-based education. There's a picture here of the Senior X Internship Program at Cabot that was stood up by the community school coordinator, where all seniors had a year-long applied internship in a community organization that aligned with their interests. So this senior ex worked at the Danville Health Center. She was interested in nutritional disparities for low-income community members. She developed a cookbook that aligns with the food that someone who is receiving SNAP benefits or WIC benefits could make. And this is a quote from her, "I learned that I have a particular knack for community service. Having a job or doing something that benefits other people in some ways makes me feel like my job or service is important." Connecting to Portrait of a Graduate for Vermont, that civic engagement. We've got some pictures down here. You know, the deeper learning wasn't only just for students in the school. Community school is really about the community. North Country Supervisory Union did really amazing things with their mobile STEAM and mobile art van to bring supplies and events to community members to solicit intergenerational learning and mentoring. And then Hazen Union High School really leaned into a bike tech program, leveraging their location right off of the Lemoil River rail trail, so that high school students were learning bike repair to offer services to the community and also learn 21st century learning skills. Good. And then another thing that we noticed that our rural community schools in particular really wanted to address was some of the service deserts that happened, particularly related to health and school health. And given that 2021 was the first year of implementation of the grant, food insecurity and food access was a major priority for many of the awardees. And so schools became a hub for delivery of food through backpack programs, through establishments of food pantries, through leveraging school gardens to increase staff eating in the cafeteria for lunch. And then additionally, several of our, of our school sites were leaning into developing or bolstering school-based health center partnerships with local primary care. Hazen High School utilized community school funding to purchase a telehealth standing unit. So that way, schools can be a hub, particularly in areas in which you have to drive 45 minutes to see if your child has strep. And if you can leverage a telehealth standing unit, parents don't have to miss as much work. Kiddos don't have to be out of school. So we're really excited about the ways in which community schools braids together school health in really organized fashion.
Perhaps unsurprisingly, for an initiative called Community Schools, another huge area that we saw this sort of themes of growth was in community connections. Community connections through things like intergenerational meals, community meals, culture nights at different schools, but then also these community resiliency efforts. Things like community mentoring in Virgin's Elementary School or the restorative truancy work in North Country Supervisory Unions. These really intentional and, and mindful efforts to connect the most vulnerable students, the ones at highest risk for disengagement and disenrollment, and, and show them that they are, are seen, they are supported and they are valued by their, their communities and by their schools. And, and we did see some really quite incredible results borne out from, from those efforts and that work. This slide is really just to, to sort of help employ, emphasize the ways in which this community schools work was a force multiplier. We have a lot of different targets, initiatives, goals that we are kind of putting out there into the world as a state and as an agency of education. And this is to demonstrate how effectively our community schools were able to leverage the amount of funding and the amount of capacity they were given by this funding and by this model to engage in these new and different approaches, connecting with different community-based organizations, supporting different community mental health initiatives, supporting different social emotional learning strategies, putting forward different and, and more involved literacy programs. Really exciting work happening and really encouraging progress towards a whole suite of different goals and priorities.
So despite only implementing community schools for three years, with that first year, of course, being in the middle of COVID disruptions, we're seeing really amazing outcomes, preliminary outcomes related to domains that community schools nationally have been associated with. And we organize them related to buckets of child development and then also outcomes related to family engagement and student engagement. And I know 10 minutes is not a lot of time, so I'm just going to highlight a couple different of these preliminary outcomes for you all to noodle on, and we're happy to come back. In terms of academics, we saw increase in the percentage of students that were proficient on standardized testing across both ELA and math. We're seeing uptake of 100% of students at Cabot doing the internship and having post-high school career and college readiness plans. And this is also something we're seeing in our schools. Embrace and include students with different learning styles and abilities. So at North Country, they have a, a life cooking skills. And 30 students with developmental disabilities are learning food preparation skills. And we had the opportunity to visit with that class when we were there for a site visit. Behaviorally, 50% reduction in absenteeism in the ninth grade for the three years of the Granite Hazen. That's one of sort of the most sticking quantitative numbers that we have. Decrease in behavioral referrals at White River. North Country is doing some really amazing work related to restorative truancy, particularly for kiddos that have been disengaged with school. They've seen the number of referrals for their student restorative truancy program go up, meaning that kiddos are being found, seen and connected to services. Staff retention, 100% were staff retention at Hazen High School the last two years of the grant. 100% staff retention at Cabot among the elementary grade bands. And the White River Valley Middle School principal actually indicated that the community school model is one of the reasons why he took the job. He became a principal in year two of the grant. Student engagement in terms of screening and accessing care through 802 Smiles and school-based health. More transportation at Cabot. They stood up an after-school program with Act 67 community schools funding. And 50% of elementary students are participating in the after-school. And remarkably, Cabot leverages their middle school and high school students-to-be-after-school facilitators. They're paid, they're stipended, they're trained, and 25% of the students are accessing that, that training and being youth facilitators. Community engagement, 220 people attended the mobile van go nights at North Country. And in Virgin, they've partnered 10 community mentors with 10 elementary students, offering over 172 hours of community-based mentoring. And at White River, 100 community members attended a food insecurity dinner for raising money for the Bethel food shelf. So this is just a snapshot of different things we're noticing, both from outcomes and service utilization and participation across our schools.
Being mindful of time, I'm going to be pretty quick on this slide. This is just looking at some of the scalability indicators we saw over the three years of the grant. The $3 million investment that the state put in enabled these grantees to have the capacity and the, the personnel to seek an additional $2.375 million in private and federal funding, nearly doubling the impact of every dollar we put in. That's exciting to me. We also saw, we had our initial five sites I mentioned. With that one multi-site supervisory union, we were in 16 schools. Over the three years of this grant, these initiatives and this work spread out to 28 different schools. these initiatives and this work spread out to 28 different schools across those five supervisory unions. So this is something that is scalable. This is something that schools are excited to bring on when they see it happening in local schools. And we were able to increase our kind of impact from 3,500 students supported in year one all the way up to 5,200 in year three. And then our final slide today is looking at sort of next steps and the future. What's kind of on the docket for this fiscal year and the two to three years out? In the last legislative session, there was $1 million authorized for continuity and expansion of community schools. The Agency of Education is advancing that in a two-pronged approach through a sustainability grant for our existing sites, particularly those sites that weren't able to fold their community school operations fully into their local budget. And then the other prong is foundational grants to create space for, we're aiming for five new community school sites across the state. We're supplementing that state funding and that state support with support from the ongoing work of the Catamount Community Schools Collaborative. That's that research partnership between the state and the University of Vermont. That partnership is going to be providing support, technical assistance, and through a one-time federal congressional earmark, funding for those five new sites that were standing up with that foundation grant to continue funding those sites into two and three more years of implementation so that they have the three-year sweep for implementation. The Catamount Community Schools Collaborative has also received awards from the Leahy Institute for Rural Partnerships and the Vermont Rural Education Collaborative to support different specific aspects of this work. And all of this is in service of standing up a community schools cohort, a professional community of practice wherein Vermont practitioners, Vermont schools that have gone through this process and this implementation can support Vermont practitioners and Vermont schools that want to go through it. That's our ultimate goal and our sort of ultimate target. We recognize that we have grossly overshot the 10 minutes that was requested, but if there is time, we are available for questions.
Thank you so much. And actually, according to my agenda, you guys had a half an hour. So I think you're fine. And I really appreciate you putting the time into creating that presentation because I think it's comprehensive and it really lays out what we're doing in a very, very short period of time in a way that feels really exciting to me. I think my one question is, when the, you know, three-year pilot program ends and you guys are scrambling for funding, and I'm sure this is going to go into the report to the General Assembly, but, you know, are you able at this point to look at the cost to run a program and sort of imputed savings by combining resources or leveraging resources as well as actual savings that you might be able to demonstrate?
Yes, so the short answer is that is yes, that is something that we're looking at. That is going to be part of our broad report. We are working with state of
Apex.
Apex. Another organization that has done return on investment work. And actually, I'll let Bernice speak to that a little bit more because I believe she's the one who's actually in that work.
So the return on investment space for community schools was definitely something we got asked when we co-presented at the legislative session this past spring. So that was front and center of something that we wanted to fold into our ongoing supportive schools. And so New Mexico has a really great report out on the return on investment of the Community School Coordinator, which is really the new personnel position that eats up most of the budget of the competitive grant process. And three of our five sites were able to build in, actually, the Community School Coordinator into the local budget in three years, which was phenomenal, given the public narrative related to budgets last spring. So they found that for every $1, for example, you're saving $7.11. And they have this app they've built that we're going to be piloting with the new cohort of Vermont schools. And also Hazen and White River have expressed interest in doing it retrospectively for the work they've done. So that's on the agenda. We probably won't have those numbers by December, but maybe some preliminary ones.
Thank you. Jenna?
Thanks. Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious if you've had an opportunity to inventory or catalog schools who are not designated community schools that currently are doing similar practices without additional funding and/or best practices that you've gleaned from the five schools that are easily transferable as best practices to other schools that are in similar demographic areas?
Yes, so that is absolutely something that we're working on. That was part of the Act 77, Act 67 charge, was to develop tools to support implementation at schools who were not grant recipients. So part of, a large part of the work we're doing is identifying those sort of themes and elements within that cohort of recipient schools that is really facilitating success there and really instrumental to success there. And something that I hope was something that I hope I made clear was that a large part of the community school ethos is recognizing and validating work that's already happening. So we fully acknowledge that the five grant recipient community schools are not the only schools in the state that are doing community schools work. At present, we don't have a method or a system for kind of credentialing, this is a community school, this isn't. And I'm honestly not sure if that's even a space that we want to step into, so much as really encouraging and promoting. These are kind of models, frameworks, and ideas that are helpful in addressing sort of issues and needs within communities.
I'll just add one, two things actually to that point because I do think it's important to hold space and nuance, whether or not you're a designated community school via specific funding or you're using the community school model and values to organize and resource schools to provide services, right? That is certainly happening across many schools in Vermont, whether or not they're calling themselves a community school. But there are existing, and we added a question to the school health profiles, which is a biannual survey that the principal and health educator fill out in Vermont that's administered by the Vermont Department of Health through the CDC. And we added a question, we, meaning the Research Practice Partnership with the AOE, asked if we could add a question on that, if schools have a community school coordinator. So in 2024, we'll have statewide data, at least on if other schools are identifying if they have that position, which isn't the only thing that distinguishes a community school versus a traditional public school. But that is one piece. We're trying to tap into existing surveillance methods to understand school-based health centers. So we have questions related to that piece, but that's not the only thing that is a community school. But about 40 schools in Vermont have school-based health centers. And I think that's a natural place to grow the community school model from as well.
Thanks. Caleb?
Hi, so I actually live in Troy, which is part of the North Country District. And although I do not go to North Country, my family, in terms of like my cousins and all that, my sister graduated from there a while back. My cousin graduated from there last year. I have another cousin graduating from there this year. And just as, so just as Gray is very involved in Virgin's with his family, mine is very involved there. So my question was, how is the current situation at North Country involving PCBs going to affect this if it's going to affect this?
That's an interesting question. That would be something that I would that's a question, to be frank, that I don't feel I am equipped to answer on behalf of North Country. I'm not sure exactly what their kind of broad overarching SU-wide strategy is going to be to address this, and I'm not sure specifically how it'll touch on this work.
And I think Caleb, I think Caleb, you asked that question. We'd be happy to liaison with Sam Stevens, who's the Community School Coordinator in North Country, about that and bring it back at a time that's appropriate because I do think that's a really important question.
Okay, yeah, that's perfectly fine.
All right, Gray, and Zoe, I thought your hand was raised, maybe not. And then we may have to
I was just going to mention, just regarding North Country specifically, there's a lot of focus in ensuring that all of the services can be maintained as we move into this next school year. So as many, as you noted, there have been some challenges with PCBs. And there's been a really dedicated focus across agencies to ensuring that where the school is able to continue to operate in-person instruction and provide the level of wraparound support and services that are really central to this community schools model. And so just wanted to reflect that there have been, you know, there is ongoing and weekly coordination with the Agency of Education, Agency of Human Services, and the Agency of Natural Resources to ensure that that coordination and support is in place at North Country to support this model and their ongoing instructional delivery.
Thanks. All right, I see Tammy, Gray, and then we may have to leave it there.
Hi, thanks, everyone, for the presentation. Hey, Bernice, it's been a while. I want to, I know we're talking about community schools and it's really great work, but I also want to take a minute to elevate the work that Bernice and her team is doing around the research-to-practice partnership. And I think, Bernice, if we could shift a little bit and talk a little bit about that, I think that'd be really helpful for the board to understand. And Zoe, you can chime in as well. I think that, of course, I want to highlight the great work that UVM Sess is doing, but I also think that this is a great model for building capacity in the state around evaluating programs and having action-oriented evaluation. You know, we talked about implementation science, and one of the things about implementation science is really getting actionable information in a timely way out for decision-making. So I'm not sure how familiar the board is with those, that sort of the RPP and the work that you all are doing, but I certainly want to recognize that it's really important work. And Bernice, can you maybe just talk a little bit about what an RPP is and sort of what the role is that you and others are playing at UVM and sort of what the value-add of that is to the state in our education communities?
Sure, Tammy, I'm so excited by your question.
Can you imagine where that came from? Go for it.
So research-practice partnerships, for those of folks that are not familiar with that term, signify a long-term mutually beneficial collaboration between a diverse set of stakeholders. So that the folks that are engaging in research and most importantly, utilizing research to inform practice represents a broader set of voices in order to ensure that our research really can inform practice in a timely way, right? And so we've actually added a third P to the research-practice partnership by adding policy into it because the partnership is between UVM, AOE, and our community schools. So we model that transformational nature when you flatten the hierarchy of who's considered a researcher, who's considered a credible bearer of knowledge to ensure that our research is informed by the lived experience of school professionals, that they can actually edit and modify, what questions are we asking? What data are we looking at? When and how? And I think that was really important for our schools to see that the approach to evaluating an educational policy was ethical, was supportive, was engaged in a process in which data was given back to schools immediately. We develop logic models every year, so they had something to utilize with their boards and strategic planning. We would code and theme qualitative interviews together. So I spent many Friday afternoons at the Agency of Education with Johannes and Jess and Peter and I coding interviews together and making sure our findings really aligned with multiple perspectives of how we see this work. We knew that telling the story needed to involve different types of visuals. We hired an ethnographic documentarian who's made amazing videos because research, if it's static, will not inform practice or policy. And that's really the goal of an RPP, is to make sure that our research is applied so that we're supporting practice and policy in a timely fashion. And I will say, Tammy, and to the rest of the state board, we've seen benefits of the research-practice partnership at both UVM and the AOE in terms of the community school model helping to organize the vast set of resources that UVM has to offer and all of the educational policies initiatives happening at the AOE that may be happening around community schools, but we can embed and integrate in a fashion that's much more streamlined if we have two entities working simultaneously using common language. And one of my goals of being a university faculty member is to get UVM resources and faculty and students out into the community. So we're supporting this work, so we're not relying so much on external funding because when that funding cliff hits, it's real. But students and faculty and research that I can bring in through different grant dollars may offset some of those real barriers for schools that might not have a grant person that can write a giant federal grant and compete with Los Angeles Unified School District to bring in full-service community school dollars. So that was a lot.
But simply, Bernice and her team at UVM are doing really great work. And this idea of research-practice partnerships, RPPs, is a national model that's being used lots of different places. And I just wanted to highlight that in addition to the community schools because I think this is certainly an RPP around community schools, but there are lots of opportunities for RPPs. RPPs can do lots of different things. And so in addition to having innovation in terms of the work we're doing around community schools in the state, we're also seeing innovation in the state led by UVM and Bernice's team and others there around really being thoughtful around sort of how do we do action-oriented research and evaluation work that can feed right back into policy practices and resources in the state? So, sorry, just, I think it was important to have both sides of that conversation because this is also an opportunity for the board to learn about that work, too. So thanks, Bernice. Nice to see you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thanks.
Great. Gray, final comments?
Yeah, mine's sure. I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I mentioned that I'm from Virgin's. You know, I went to Virgin's Elementary School. So did my sister and all of my cousins. And it's the elementary school my parents went to back in the 80s. I certainly know Matt de Bloi and Lynn Rapport very well. So thank you for everything you guys have done and for the presentation, yeah.
Well, thank you. It was our pleasure.
Yeah, thank you both. I think it would be really interesting if you wanted to come back after you prepare your report to the General Assembly and just provide another update so we can get you on the calendar sometime in the spring.
We'll be happy to be here.
Delighted to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so at this point, we are going to pop over to Agenda Item Q, which is a post-secondary closure and Goddard College student record designation. So I believe we have a green sheet on that. And Zoe, are you the one leading this conversation?
Cassandra Ryan will walk you through the green sheet. Yes, Cassandra?
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon. So Cassandra Ryan, Agency of Education Director of Regulatory Compliance. And yeah, so Item Q is we're looking for state board action on the student academic record designation of a repository for Goddard College. So unfortunately, we have a bit of experience here over the last few years in our post-secondary institutions closing down. So this may be familiar to some of you, but I thought I'd give you a little bit of background in case this is your first one that you've been participating in. As part of our Title 16 statute, post-secondary institutions that are closing have some responsibility. So does the State Board of Education. The post-secondary institution, amongst all the other things they have to do to close and discontinue their accreditation, they must also prepare all of the student academic records and deliver them to an entity that is designated by the State Board of Education. Students are, of course, entitled to receive or to be able to obtain, anyway, a verified copy of their academic record. There may be a payment associated with it, but they're entitled to be able to continue to access that record after the school closes. And in most cases, I think that Goddard has followed exactly what we would have expected. Goddard has entered into an agreement with an entity that they are hoping will go ahead and be the board's also their determination. So Goddard closed their final semester ended August 30th, so just a couple of weeks ago. And the college relinquished its NUCI accreditation on September 14th, just last Saturday. They've entered into an agreement with Prescott College in Prescott, Arizona. And they are asking the state board to officially designate Prescott as that official repository for these records. They've done a great job at getting this information on their website so that students can begin accessing the records immediately. If the state board does go ahead and approve that designation, the Agency of Education will also add them to our website so that we can correctly root students who are concerned website so that we can correctly root students who are concerned or, or looking to obtain those records. And this is only student academic records, so no other records are required to be maintained. And then just some other information I think I wanted to share in case folks are not familiar with Prescott. Recently, we had another post-secondary closed, Green Mountain College, and Green Mountain College and the state board both agreed that Prescott College would be the appropriate repository for those records. And to date, I'm not aware, I don't believe anyone else is either at the agency, of any issues or complaints with Prescott's handling of those student academic record requests. I've not seen anything come through. So that's, that's what I have. Happy to answer any questions on the process. Though I will just share that the agency's role in the closure of a post-secondary institution is very minimal and it is really just two, two-part. It's helping to determine where those records should be, presenting that to the State Board of Education as well as their NCSSAR membership. Other than that, we have not been involved in the actual closure of Goddard College.
Thank you, Cassandra. And I, I thought I had remembered that Prescott was where Green Mountain College records are being stored. So this is just following along in a very similar fashion. Board members, any questions? Hearing none. There is a proposed, there's proposed motion language on the green sheet, if anyone would like to make the motion.
The State Board of Education approved Prescott College, Prescott, Arizona, as the designated entity pursuant to 16 VSA subsection 175 to act as permanent repository for Goddard College student academic records.
Thank you, Lyle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion as read by Lyle, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? All right, we've carried the motion. It's unanimous. And thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And we'll get right on getting that posted on our website.
Okay, so I'm going to take us back to Agenda Item K. Before we jump back into the conversation, I now note that we are basically at time for a meeting, which I just want to have a show of hands. If people, let me, let me frame it this way. Is anyone able to? Does anyone have a cutoff of 1:30 and will not be able to stay past 1:30? If I could?
I have a cutoff of 1:15.
1:15. Okay, so I think what's going to have to happen is that we are going to need to postpone consideration of what we don't get through to our next meeting. So should we finish off Item K? Okay, where we left it, Tammy had proposed language that she put in the chat at 12:05 PM. Entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for full board action in response to the requirements of Act 183, 2024, as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education and constituting the state board's governance, including bylaws, processes, and procedures, and other statutory responsibilities. Tom, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, first, are we on Item M or K?
We're on Item K. This is, this is where we left off with our three buckets of committees. So we have retired the 2200 Committee. What we are in the process of is reconstituting that committee with a charge that is more responsive to the work that the committee is actually doing.
Yeah, I was just looking at the agenda. Item K is process for state board approval of standards. And M is the review of board committees and membership, is?
Well, I don't know if you, I hope that's not the, according to my agenda, Item K is review of board committees and membership.
Okay, this is the one I printed out this morning.
Okay. Just so we're clear, we're talking about the review of board committees and membership.
And the, the only other thing I, I'd say is that I think it's always useful to set off something in parentheses rather than a whole series of commas to make it clear what you're talking about. So just in, that's in relation to Tammy's last edit, it's not a big deal, but from starting from including that, that phrase there.
To put in parentheses?
Yeah.
That I would, go ahead, sorry.
No, just, I was, I was just going to say, what'd you say, governance, then you have the specific the specific list that's set off by commas. I just, it's clear, clear whether or not you want to include laws, procedures, and procedures in the parentheses, or if other statutory responsibilities are also in there. I think what Tammy meant was laws, processes, and procedures. But I don't know, that's what, it was unclear to me.
I might suggest, too, that we say including consideration of the need to update and/or implement bylaws, processes, procedures, and other statutory responsibilities.
But we don't have some of these things, so I, I don't know about update.
Well, that's where I said.
Say that, I think we need to say create, update.
No, that's why I said and/or, because I think we were considering the need to implement and/or update. I think that we need to have a, you know.
Say that again, I'm trying to type and say, sorry. Including the need.
To implement and/or update bylaws, processes, procedures, and other statutory responsibilities.
Well, I think it would be create, right, for parallel construction, create or update.
Okay.
The implementate, the rules and responsibilities committee is not going to have anything to do with implementing, right? We're going to create things or we're going to update things.
Correct. Well, I was considering the need to, but okay, that's fine.
So I can put it with dashes, Tom, or I could put it parentheses? You tell me what you want to do.
I'm, I'm a big dash fan, but I know it's.
I know you are. Whole year on an EQS committee. I learned that. Does this work for you, Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to know where the.
Yeah, take a look at it. Tell me, tell me if that looks okay.
It's not showing up just yet. Do I need to refresh the chat?
I can read it out loud, too, just for the benefit of the public. Entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for full board action in response to the requirements of Act 183 of 2024, as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education and constituting the state governance dash, including the need to create and/or update laws, processes, and procedures dash, and other statutory responsibilities.
Yep, that's clear. That clears up what I was wondering about.
Gray?
Two things. One, in terms of more general than specific, you know, wordings of what this is, to bring it back to a point Tammy brought up way earlier, I feel like the Rules and Responsibilities Committee is just, you know, a standing committee, and we never really addressed that of the difference between a standing committee and a committee that's for one, excuse me, a specific purpose. But, you know, I feel like there's more to the Roles and Responsibilities Committee than just addressing specific pieces of legislation, which is partially addressed here. But I don't know, I just think we should talk about that a bit. And then, secondly, I don't know where we're standing now on the possible name change of the committee, because that's not in, in the wording, but are we still changing the name? Because I'm still opposed to that if we are. I still think it should just be the Roles and Responsibilities Committee, although I like the look of most of the new language.
Okay, thanks. Let me, let me just kind of jump in there. I think one is I envision this ultimately being a standing committee that, you know, considers ongoing board responsibilities, but I think in the first instance, I would recommend that we keep it clearly tied to the charge that's enacted. That it's clear that that's what we're working on, because I really do think that needs to be our first priority. Again, I, I really, this is not a, you know, a, a strong feeling of mine, but I do think that it would clear that this is a committee with a different charge than what everyone was calling Roles and Responsibilities if we change the name to Roles and Functions. But again, I mean, like, that, that, that's not something that I feel, you know, terribly strongly about. I do think it clarifies that this is a different committee with a different charge. Kim?
I would echo Gray's comments as it is good practice for boards to have a standing Roles, Responsibilities, Governance Committee. And that we're going to be in a position to have to dissolve and reconstitute if we're citing specific statute. So I'm wondering if we want to just say in response to statutory, you know, in, in response to statute, period, possibly, like, I, the reason you're suggesting we dissolve the other and call it something different is because it was in response to Act 66.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that's bad.
But I'm thinking we could solve that problem and respond to Gray's and Tammy's consideration and, and recognize it as good practice. To have a standing sort of governance, Roles and Responsibilities Committee. I think that is in fact, you know, good practice, and it would not need to be confined by a particular reference to statute. And the other question I'm going to put out there is including the need to create or update laws at the end. I, it would not be the board's responsibility to update the laws to inform legislation, yes, but I, I wasn't sure, as I read through the end of that long sentence, whether it was implying that the board is actually updating laws. We would update regulation, but not law. So I, I think there's a challenge, a, a concern about getting lost in who is doing what at the end.
Maybe instead of.
I would. No, go ahead. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I just, I lose it at the end of that to know who's doing what, and it struck me that it looks like we're considering that we're updating laws and we're not. We're informing that if that's to happen. But I would agree with Gray that by citing particular areas of statute as the cause for the charge, we end up no longer being able to keep that charge or the committee moving forward, and it's good practice to have this, this type of a committee as a standing, standing committee.
Okay, two thoughts. One is, what if we strike in response to the requirements of Act 183, 2024? So it would read entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for full board action as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education and constituting the state board's governance dash, including the need to create and/or update rules, processes, and procedures dash, and other statutory responsibilities. Kim, your hand is still up.
I don't know why we have to have rules in there. I, I mean, I, I don't, why do we need to have it that specific? I guess I'm missing, I'm missing that.
Well, I was thinking, because we don't update laws to Kim's point, so maybe we just take that out.
But I, yeah, I'm not sure that that becomes a construct, like, in this topic, this topic of Roles, Responsibility, and Self-Governance, which is, is good practice to have a.
I can't hear Kim.
Can you guys hear me?
No, I can't.
Okay, I guess, I don't, I'm just saying, we don't update laws, that's a fact. I just think that we're I, it's not, we have a statutory responsibility to update regulation, but that could be related to EQS, it could be related to 2200, could be related to other things. This committee, I think, is inward-focused on our roles and responsibilities and governance practices. That's how I take this committee to be. No?
May I interrupt for one second? I just realized that was meant to be bylaws, and I think the by got dropped from the latest iteration.
Right, that was my, that was my comment.
That, that might.
Well, that fixes that problem. Need to create and/or update. Well, that makes more sense.
Sorry, it wasn't intentional. I'm doing my best with red line and strikeout here on the fly.
Okay, no, I, that fixes that problem for me. Yeah, and getting rid of the 183 reference, I think, fixes that, too. And it gives it a standing nature that isn't confined by a particular time in a single act.
Okay, so now what we have is.
Bylaws is hyphenated, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for full board action as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education and constituting the state board's governance dash, including the need to create and/or update bylaws, processes, and procedures dash, and other statutory responsibilities.
That committee is called. What? I'll move it, I'll move it right now. I'll call the question. You know I will.
Does anyone feel strongly?
Roles and responsibilities.
I'd like Roles and Responsibilities, sorry.
I, I'm going to go with, I'm going to go with Gray. Gray, Gray, Gray made a compelling case for Roles and Responsibilities, and it seems like we're just, let's just keep this simple. We can change the charge, we'll keep the name the same, you know?
Okay.
You sound like that's where you were headed, Lyle.
Yep.
Okay, Lyle, would you like to make a motion?
I would move that we entertained that motion right there that I'm looking at.
You might just want to.
And, okay, that we entertain a motion that the SBE establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for full board action as it pertains to the role and function of the State Board of Education and constituting the state board's governance, including the need to create and/or update bylaws, processes, and procedures, and other statutory responsibilities. And as such, it will be called the Roles and Responsibilities Subcommittee. Or Committee, whatever you want to call it.
I think it's.
I guess it's a committee.
All right, there's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Gray. He beat you to it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion as read by Lyle, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Tammy, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I, I, if we're done with that, I'd like to propose maybe that we shift. I'm really just concerned about time and Tom's going to be here. That we shift to the standards as opposed to continuing with our discussion of committees.
I hear that. We need to finish the second motion on this Roles and Responsibilities.
Oh, I thought Lyle had them both. Sorry, Lyle.
The, the next, I will, I will entertain a motion that the State Board of Education authorize its chair to appoint members to newly constituted Roles and Responsibilities Committee. Is there a motion?
Wait, I'm confused. I thought we had a motion already, or we were just rolling over members.
No, so it's, yeah, it's, it's a two-part motion. We have to create the committee and then we have to populate the committee. So we've created the committee, now we're populating the committee. And so there was some discussion about whether board members would be named by name in this, or whether we were granting authority to the chair to appoint members. My understanding was, although there was some disagreement, there seemed to be consensus toward the idea of allowing the chair to authorize, authorizing the chair to appoint the members. So that is how the motion is prepared. That's still up for discussion.
Can I, can I try a suggestive language and see if it flushes out both of these ideas? Something to the effect, I'm, and Rich, this isn't an actual motion, this is a hear me out and see if I thought language that works motion, just because I don't want to have to pull it back. So I might move that the current, the former Roles and Responsibility Committee be assigned as members of the newly constituted Roles and Responsibility Committee with future membership being with future membership being, um, appointed or considered by chair for approval by board. Or recommended by chair for approval by board. That would take care of the concern we had regarding turnover for those of us coming off the board. And it might be a set of language that could work. So you could sort of have the quarterback view on all committees and who's serving where, and you could make the recommendation to the full board for who would serve on those committees. And the, the timeliness of that would usually be fine within a, a meeting, but for this first meeting of these committees that are just being renamed, we would already know who's on them and you would get our approval of that already.
I could tell you where-
Turnover, you would know. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we could vote that now, but not constrain you from making a future recommendation when board members are off. Or people come to and say, I'm too busy, I can't do this anymore, or I've got too many conflicts.
I, I just patterned this based on what we have done with other committees that we've created, because I went through and I pulled all of that language in preparation for our August meeting. So it was always a two-part, you know, we established the committee and then authorized the chair to appoint members to the newly constituted committee. And then the chair made the announcement of who was on the committee.
Yeah, and I know that in this last round of sort of renaming people to the Roles and Responsibility Committee, you guys ran into a quorum issue. And, um, and it went from Tammy chairing to you guys co-chairing. And I just, I think that there is good value in the board being made aware of who's serving on what committees and just, it's likely to be more of a rubber stamp. I mean, you are gonna know who's doing what. And so when we turn over, you guys, you will have that insight and you will reach out to people or they'll reach out to you. And then you'll just bring it for almost like a, um, a, uh, uh, I forget what they're called when it's, um, like a pro forma type of, of the board. Yeah, but I don't think it's pro forma, it's called something else in board stuff. Like, um, a consent agenda type approval of c- committee, um, reassignment or something. But it would, it would give you the opportunity to populate when needed and it would give us the opportunity to say affirmatively and in a public meeting that those current committees are being reconstituted with a different name, but the same players. And I see Tom, he may have the brilliant idea that fixes all of this for us.
I got, I got sixty seconds. I, I think there's a difference between, I, so what we've done in the past is the board chair has um, appointed members and then has in a full board meeting, announced who's been on the committee. So it hasn't been a secret, but it hasn't been a vote that, um, or an action by the full board to approve the membership of a committee. In my time so far, it's always been the board chair, um, names the members of the committee and then announces it at a board meeting. So this would be a change in how we've done it, at least in my time. And I'm sorry that I, I have to leave, but, um, but I do.
Does, does anybody see a problem?
I, I, again, I think we're bumping up against time here. And this is a really fulsome discussion. You know, these kinds of things that we're talking through right now seem like the kinds of processes and procedures that we started to talk about at our August meeting and identified the things that we need to write down. I've heard a couple of times, well, this is how we've always done it. Well, that's, that's okay, but that's not codified anywhere, right? And I think the risk is, is that we start to codify these things in an ad hoc way without having a larger discussion about this is how we're going to generally apply things across X, Y, and Z. And so I, I don't know that we need to do, do we need to do anything further on this today? And perhaps what we need to do is in doing, what do we need to do?
We, we, we need to populate the committee so that the committee can meet.
Can I make the motion then? And if this process needs to change for another occasion, it could. This is a different occasion, folks. We've not had a renaming of committees that generally stayed the same. We just haven't had it. And I would say we haven't taken the time we took to sort of redefine charge in the way we did and end up with the same committee name as we just did on roles and responsibilities. So I move that we have that the previous members of the Roles and Responsibilities Committee be assigned to the newly constituted Roles and Responsibilities Committee with future membership being recommended by the chair to the full board for a vote.
Um, I'll wait for a second and then I have a comment.
Proficiency, I'll second.
Okay, um, so it's been moved and seconded. The problem is the Secretary Surge Committee is, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Roles and Responsibilities Committee is currently comprised of Tammy Colby Chair, Lyle Jepson, Jenna O'Farrell, Rich Warner. Um, the new composition of the committee is going to be Tammy and me as co-chair, Jenna and Mohammed. So we can't just put the same committee members on the new committee. So could we authorize the chair to appoint members to the committee?
I'm sure that this is part of a different or bigger conversation, but Jennifer, I'm wondering why you need to co-chair? And why Gray, who had brought a student voice to the work, wasn't able to remain on? And I understand everybody's got a lot of work coming up. I know Lyle will be deeply involved in our um, CTE roles. So I understand the need to shift, but.
So I had heard from Tammy that Gray wanted to be on and confirmed with Gray that he did. I then spoke with Gray after we had our quorum issue. Um, and, you know, he understood. Personally, I think it is paramount for me to be on the committee because I'm also representing the board on the commission on this very issue. And it is helpful for me to be deeply involved in the committee work, the board's work, so that I, we have, you know, constant loops of communication that are internally consistent. So I feel very strongly that I do need to be on this committee and that it is appropriate for me to co-chair it. Lyle?
I was just gonna say the same thing about your, your concurrent role. I think that you do need to be on the committee. And I think to go back to what Kim said, and I think it's consistent with what you're saying, Kim, that we can change this in the future, but I think we just ought to get the committee composed. Let, let Jennifer do it this time. If we then want to look at how we're doing creating committees in the future, we can change it in the future. I don't think it's locked in stone, but I think this one's got to get nailed down.
Any further discussion?
So is the, do I need to withdraw the motion? What, what do we need to have happen here?
Well, you can, that is an option. You can withdraw it and then we can, um, make another motion. Or we can vote on it. And depending on what happens, then we go forward or not.
I, I just, I'm in the interest of time, looking to move it forward. And I, I have a suggestion for what used to be a standing legislative committee, which is a topic for, it's going to be the next thing I'm gonna suggest, is that there are lots of areas of legislation that if we had a standing committee could be helping to inform you and your representation of us. So, um, I will withdraw this and somebody else can make motion. I'm running out of ideas and energy here.
All right.
Does Tammy need to? Tammy needs to withdraw her second, is that correct?
Yes.
I go with my second. But I'm unclear what the motion is on the floor. So I'm sorry, I've lost track. I was trying to type everything up and keep track, but I've lost track. So what is the motion?
So I will entertain a motion that the State Board of Education authorize its chair to appoint members to the newly constituted Roles and Responsibilities Committee.
I would second that.
Well, that, you're moving.
Oh, I'm moving. I would move that.
I'm entertaining the motion. So yes, move by Lyle. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rich. Any further discussion?
It doesn't mean we, sorry, doesn't mean that we can't change how we do it in the future. It's just for this committee, this is what we're doing right now.
And I will say for the interest of time, I will, um, vote in favor of this, but that I am going to strongly encourage and ask that we discuss how this will happen moving forward.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
And signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. We can leave it there. Um, I will point out that the EQS Committee was authorized, um, under the umbrella of Act one. So that was my next committee that needed to change its charge.
So I think the EQS Committee also was charged with taking up the standards last September. It's in the minutes. And so in the absence of us doing anything differently, I would say we could begin reconvening at the EQS Committee and begin looking at the IRS standards and taking testimony as necessary. And we discussed at the August meeting, the, um, suggestion anyway, that the PE and health standards would go to EQS because they may imply need for change.
We lost you again, Kim. We can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. I am having a terrible problem here, um, with-
Can anybody else hear Kim?
Can you guys hear me now?
I can't hear Kim. I, may, may I paraphrase Kim's question? I think I understand where she's going, which is, is, and again, in, in the interest of time here, i- is it, obviously the IRS standards would fall under the Act one charge of the EQS Committee and they've already been assigned there. We needed to wait until the EQS was passed, right, accepted by ALCAR before we could really move forward with implementing standards against revised rule that hadn't been approved. I think the question is, is, is there any reason that the health standards cannot be referred to the EQS Committee under its current charge? I, I don't know that there is, right? And so perhaps we can just refer those and then deal with the larger committee structure at, at the next meeting.
So I'm looking at the minutes from our September twenty-twenty-three meeting, which is when Amanda came and presented um, on the IRS Ethnic Studies Standards Framework. There was no referral to the EQS Committee. It just says, Colby provided a brief introduction of the Ethnic and Social Equity Standards Working Group and reminded the State Board of its legislative charge to consider adopting ethnic and social equity standards under sixteen VSA section one sixty-four nine. Um, Amanda Garsus, Michael Martin, and Natasha Eckert, I'm dropping their, um, titles, presented the IRS Ethnic Studies Standards Framework to the State Board, period. And that was it.
Okay, so under the current charge for the EQS Committee, which was originally around Act one, there's no, I don't see any reason why we can't now refer IRS to that commit, I mean, we're running out of time, so.
I know.
So I'm thinking, I'm trying, I'm trying to find a path of least resistance so we can take up those standards. I don't think there's any reason we can't refer them to the, to the EQS Committee at this point, right?
The EQS Committee was established to begin planning for the process to intake recommendations received from the Act one advisory group, consider other changes to the EQS rules, and manage the rulemaking process through to completion. That's the charge. That doesn't mention standards under one sixty-four nine.
The other areas of Act one very specifically speak to ethnic standards.
I agree. I'm just saying that we-
And there was a subsequent statute, I think, that gave a timeline for our consideration as the end of December last year. Um, I'm trying to find it. And-
So Kim, I hear you. I hear you. I hear you. But I also hear what Jennifer's saying. So I think we've got to create a real expedient way here to refer the standards to a committee so that we can start to work on them, both those standards and the, and the health standards. But that means we have a commit, like, we gotta talk about a process for referring, we gotta have a place for them to go. We gotta have those two pieces here, right? And we haven't talked about process yet.
Um, what my, you know, much like Roles and Responsibilities, this was the three motions. One, two A and two B. So one is to retire the Education Quality Standards Committee that was created December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Two A is to entertain a motion that the State Board of Eds establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for the full board to consider pursuant to sixteen VSA one sixty-four nine to implement and continually update standards for student performance in appropriate content areas and at appropriate intervals in the continuum from kindergarten to grade twelve and methods of assessment to determine attainment of the standards for student performance. That's taken straight from the statute. And then three is again to populate that committee.
Can you copy that in the chat? It's just really hard to process all that information.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that in the meeting package. We're, we're not, you know, talking in a vacuum. Um, I see Jenna and then Kim.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry. But before we left the Roles and Responsibilities Committee there for today, is, would the next step be naming the committee? Because if the committee needs to meet next week, you have to rename the members of the committee?
I think we did. We, we named it again, Roles and Responsibilities.
Okay, I just didn't know if that counted because we, you, you went over the transition of members before we did the vote.
We gave Jenny authority to appoint it and she listed a bunch of people that aren't-
Right.
On it anymore and a bunch of people that were on it. So I-
Right.
We changed the name and it is not constituted.
I think Lyle included that in his motion. That, that was the tag on, on Lyle's motion and to, you know, call it the Roles and Responsibilities Committee. Was Lyle still with us?
Then Jen, you said that there was different, you said though Jen, that there were different people when it, you listed, Lyle isn't on it anymore, right? Like, I am, I am confused.
Yep, I read off the list of four people that were included on our webpage. So that's why I was rejecting your suggestion, Kim, that we just lift and shift from the old committee to the new committee because the, the, I'm sorry, Jenna. Um, the, the members were different.
Right. But I think now that every motion has passed, this would be a time that you rename, that you would-
Say it out loud.
Assign members to the committee in an official capacity.
Oh, my goodness. I understand what you're saying and I realized I did not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Me a while, and, and I'm sorry, my head is-
When we finished the last motion, we left it there and we moved on, but I think the next step would be to name the members and then the members can then meet in the committee next week, as scheduled.
Thank you. Thank you for persevering with me. Um, okay, the newly constituted Roles and Responsibilities Committee will include Tammy and me serving as co-chairs, Jenna and Mohammed. Sorry, I'm just spreading this out. Excuse any typos. I'm just gonna make sure that I got everything. I just dropped it in the chat. Entertain a motion that the State Board of Education establish a committee charged with developing recommendations for the full board to consider pursuant to sixteen VSA one sixty-four nine to implement and continually update standards for student performance in appropriate content areas and at appropriate intervals in the continuum from kindergarten to grade twelve and methods of assessment to determine attainment of standards for student performance.
So Jen, the minutes from our September twentieth meeting have under item L, establish a committee to review the Ethnic Studies Standards Framework submitted by Act one working group on July third. And in that, there was a motion made that it be sent to the
Yes.
uh, committee to review and that committee was named as the EQS Committee with all of our names on it.
Yes, you are-
That is in the minutes from September. So I'm wondering if-
That was literally the next paragraph. So I'm sorry.
Be, yes, I knew I had read it somewhere.
Oh, and this is when I just realized my head's gonna say, I'm human, sorry.
Oh, of course. I am just, I was like, I might be losing my mind. I swear to God, I saw it. And it would let us not have to deal with this in this moment.
Yes.
And I think we recognized in August as we didn't understand why we were getting new health and PE standards from the AOE that we will have some conflict with those that are, that will butt against some very specific language in EQS. So I, I think without reconstituting any committees, if we want to rename the committee later, you could probably do that, but without dissolving and reconstituting, we might be able to address the two things that are immediate and be done with this.
Yeah. So, thank you- Yeah. So, thank you for catching that. I mean, and frankly, there's another committee that is, it kind of got lost through the cracks here. So we have an Ethnic Studies Standards Framework Committee. So that has already been constituted. We should note it as such. In the interest of time, I don't think we should do this today, but I think what we do need to do is enlarge the scope of that committee's charge to include any performance standards that come before the board. And I also note that we now have five voting members.
Five voting members.
You know, it was fine when Gray was a non-voting member, but now that he's a voting member, we do need to think about the composition of that committee.
Understood. And maybe committee members could let Tammy and you and I know if there's like some time constraints or whatever that are problematic for them that are different than was the case before. If they aren't able to continue, I'd love to be able to continue with our institutional knowledge that our full committee had. So I, I would like to be able to see this work through personally. I'll, I'll say that for the record. And then I know that my term will be up in the spring whenever there's a reappointment. So I know, and know and understand that the work will need to continue it as a somewhat standing committee regarding standards as they come up, you know, and it could be renamed another day. I don't, I don't really know.
Let me suggest this. And Zoe, the, the intent had been to stand up a Standards Performance Committee today. I think if it makes sense to the board, because we already have this education, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back and read this for real. We've already established a committee to review the Ethnic Studies Standards Framework at our September 20th, 2023 meeting. That committee is already live with the one issue that has been flagged that we only need four members on that committee, not five, to deal with quorum issues. And then at our next meeting, what I would propose is that we will continue this whole discussion about committees and who's on them. And at that point, I would recommend that we enlarge the scope of the EQS Performance Standards Committee to include any Performance Standards Committee. Or, hold up. What if, what if we just make a motion to rename the Ethnic Studies Standards Framework today and rename it as the Education Quality Standards Committee. I'm, I'm sorry. Nope, that's the wrong word. Student Performance Standards Committee. Can we just rename Ethnic Studies Standards Framework Committee to Oh, I'm sorry, I'm doing too many things.
Student, I think.
Student Performance Standards Committee. And that would allow any performance standards that are currently pending before the board to be considered by that committee.
I think reflecting on Yeah, I think reflecting on prior conversations, that's consistent with the intent of ensuring that there's one committee that has kind of a consistent methodology and approach to reviewing and recommending standards. So I think that's in alignment with the board's prior conversations.
Okay. Kim, did I hear you make that motion?
I did.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I believe that was Lyle. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay.
I'm confused. I'm sorry. What's, which motion is this? Are we changing the name? Are we? I'm sorry. I'm trying to track. Okay, we're changing the name of the Equity Standards Committee. That's what we're doing?
Yes, just to recap, Kim astutely noted that at Item L of our September 20th, 2023 meeting, we established a committee to review the Ethnic Studies Standards. My recommendation that we just voted on was to enlarge the charge of that committee to be Performance Standards.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to write this all down. I'm just getting a little
Well, luckily, we have Maureen doing that as well, so.
I know. And Maureen, I think I captured, I heard Jenna, Jennifer also sort of expand that, I guess, the charge of what was the Ethnic Studies Standards Framework Committee to include consideration of any future student performance standards. So I intended for that to be what you said, Jennifer, sort of expanded the scope, so it wasn't to one single set of standards, and that was what I was moving.
Yeah.
And I don't know exactly what those words are, but that's what I took as your intent.
Yeah. So I believe that is what we have done. I'm going to hold off on the rest of Agenda Item K. We, we got through the hard stuff. I'll tell you that. The rest of it's going to be easy. But we will hold that off until our next meeting. Because I think what we would like to do is move on to the proposed process for State Board approval of standards. And then initiate review of the health standards, PE standards, and the ethnic studies standards, and refer that to the Student Performance Standards Committee. And then I think we're going to postpone everything else into our next meeting. Does that fit with what everyone else is thinking? Okay, not hearing any disagreement. So Tammy
It's fine with me, Maureen. I just need to be able to share my screen so I can show the doc, show the stuff. Can you give me permission?
Yeah, you should be in there as a presenter, but let me double check.
I'm not, sorry. I sent this to everyone as well this morning. Jennifer, I think I've been sent to you back off, or off of somebody's
It might be me. I'll, I'll mute now, but are you able to present?
Yeah, I am. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. One second. I think I accidentally closed it when I was doing the motions. So I apologize. Okay. And this will be added to the meeting packet for the public. At our last Rules and Responsibilities Committee meeting, uh, this September 3rd, 2024, we discussed at a very high level a process for this State Board to take in standards and then sort of review and consider standards going forward. And so I wrote a memo back to the Subcommittee on this. We didn't have our last meeting. The purpose originally was, I thought they would read through this, because this was draft text of me capturing what they said. But I'm going to share it with full board, and then we can have some discussion about it. Again, I did email this to you all this morning, and we can add it to the meeting package. But the proposed process for updating existing or considering new standards for student performance, we broke this out into several components intake. And noting here that statute requires the State Board to implement and continually update standards for student performance in appropriate content areas and at appropriate intervals in the continuum from kindergarten to grade 12, and methods of assessment to determine attainment of the standards for student performance. That's again 16 VSA Section 164.9. That said, it's important to note, and the Subcommittee noted, that statute is silent on how the SBE might identify or receive standards for its consideration. So the Subcommittee considered, in our discussion, two possible ways the State Board of Ed might receive standards for consideration. They might be proposed, proposed or recommended by Vermont Agency of Education, or two, by an outside entity or constituent group. The committee did not consider a process where the State Board developed or proposed standards on its own. So the process I'm talking about covers either one or two here. We get them from the agency, or they come from someplace else. The proposed process for intaking those standards that we discussed is when the standards are received by the State Board, either from the AOE or some other entity, the proposing entity will do the following. Provide SBE with the standards as an electronic document for the board's review, an electronic document, and also, of course, will allow us to post it to our, to, to the web for public viewing. And two, we would ask a presentation of the standards to the State Board at a meeting of the full board, at which time presenters will be available to respond to board members' questions. Then following that presentation, the SBE will determine whether the board will determine, I've got a typo here, I'm sorry, will determine whether it has sufficient information about the standards to initiate its review. The board finds there is sufficient information initiated review, the board may refer the standards to the EQS Subcommittee, and that may now need to be renamed in this memo, or two, move to vote to approve or disapprove of the standards as proposed. If, in fact, the board refers standards to the EQS Subcommittee, and again, that committee naming being renamed relevant to what we talked about today. So in instances where the standards are referred to the EQS Subcommittee for further consideration, the Subcommittee shall, at its first opportunity, develop a plan and timeline for reviewing the proposed standards. The plan should include opportunities for the EQS Subcommittee to take in and consider public comment on the proposed standards, and for standards not proposed by the AOE review and, by the AOE review and comment by the agency. The US EQS Subcommittee Chair or Chairs will submit the plan and timeline to this full SBE for its consideration at its next full board meeting, at which time the full board will vote to approve or disapprove the plan and timeline. The EQS Subcommittee will update the full board on its progress in considering the proposed standards at least at each monthly State Board of Education meeting. And subsequent modifications to the initial plan and timeline for the EQS Subcommittee's review shall be approved by the full board. Coming out of the work from the Subcommittee, right, would be recommendations by the EQS Subcommittee, Subcommittee, and that so at the conclusion of its work, the EQS Subcommittee will make a recommendation to the full board as to approve the standards with no modifications, approve the standards with modifications, or C, approve the proposed standards, not approve the proposed standards. The EQS Subcommittee will provide the full board with written justification for its recommendation for modifying a proposed standard, and its recommendation not to approve a proposed standard. And then at its first opportunity after receiving the EQS Subcommittee's recommendation, the full board will consider the EQS Subcommittee's recommendation and will, by vote of the full board, approve or disapprove the standards. I'll put all this text in the chat. So that's, that's loosely what we discussed at our Subcommittee meeting. So I, I want to make sure that Subcommittee meeting members agree that I captured our discussion. Again, we didn't have a chance to talk about it. Yeah, I copied all of the text in.
The only amendment I would make is just, as you noted, Tammy, EQS Committee is now going to be the Student Performance Standards Committee. But that's, that's the only edit that I would suggest.
So generally, how do people feel about that process?
I think it at least gives us an articulated plan. One of the concerns I have is the amount of time that might pass before the committee can even do its work if we're waiting for approval from the full board on the plan. A plan to make a plan to do the work. And so my suggestion might be that at the first instance, the committee takes it up, so the first paragraph under referring to the Subcommittee stays. I think the second paragraph should not require board approval. It should require board presentation because the committee is going to take into account all, all information to know what timeline might be reasonable. And I think if we have to wait for either the board to litigate whether or not that timeline is actually reasonable before we commit to doing that work, it is really potentially going to draw that time out. It might be that we come with a plan and the board says, we really expect that at this point, this should move more quickly, and we modify our work plan, and we, of course, would take that under advisement. We have to bring to the board that which they feel they can, you know, approve. We have to do our work as, as board chairs, or as committee chairs to bring forward
So Kim, just to summarize, what I hear you saying is you want to drop the part about the full board vote and just leave it that.
Yeah.
We need to come back for consideration of a timeline. So let me
And while updating with progress, so. That's what I would do. Second paragraph, page two, second sentence, or second half of the sentence, I'd get rid of it.
I got you.
And bring the next paragraph up.
I got you. Any other edits? I want to call Zoe into this conversation because I know in many instances, Zoe, that these will be coming from you. Is this a process? I mean, we were intentional on it and being clear that we would want to partner with the agency on these things. Is this a process that you can live with?
I think my question would be, as you're organizing this process, what there's opportunity, the opportunities for the Agency of Education to come in and provide some recommendations and considerations? Because I know that there's multiple pathways for standards to be reviewed with this committee, and so just want to be thoughtful around how we can be engaged fully in that process.
So in the end of the first paragraph under referring standards, we are very specific that, and for standards not proposed by the agency, that we seek review and comment from the agency.
I think that'd be helpful.
It's already in there.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's weary. Now's the time to do this, because everybody's tired. Okay, great. Do we have a motion to approve the proposed standards here with the modification to drop the vote?
And to rename the committee.
Jennifer, excuse me?
And, and to change the name of the committee. Those, those were the two changes.
Yep.
I'll second your motion, Tammy.
I think I need a motion.
I'll move.
Rich, now's your big opportunity. Second. Great.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Jen, can I, Jen, if I leave, are you still going to have a quorum?
Um, we've got Gray, Tammy, Jenna, Kim, me, yes.
Okay. Can I have one second just to say, say something really quick? And just something to think about. Zoe may hate me and never talk to me again for the rest of my life. But I, um, I'd really love to see, maybe to help with time here, and I've been making a whole bunch of notes and looking and trying to find things. But if like, we could have written reports, like if, if the interim secretary or whatever we're, you know, it is, if they could give us a written report that we can look at. And if, whenever anybody's going to be making a presentation, if they could send that to us so that it goes out with the packets, we started doing that at the SU and at our school district. And then that way, what we do is, is when we get to that, you know, we have like the superintendent's report. So when we get there, you know, I, I would say to folks, okay, other than what is, if you, are there any questions on what was submitted? Everybody in the public gets to see it. It's what, you know, that goes with the agenda. And a lot of this stuff, she's told us about it. We were over half an hour just with Zoe's report before we got to questions. We only allotted her 15 minutes. She can't do that all in 15 minutes. Especially with all the stuff she's got going on. And then, then it could be, so if we've covered a report and everybody's good with that, then, you know, we can give her a chance that, oh, hey, yesterday, after I wrote this report, you know, I had a, a great idea. So here's what my idea was, or, and I think it just may help us keep on track. Because there's a lot of good discussion, a lot of good things that get cut short because we don't have the time. And I'm just wondering if we could try that. And, you know, we, I instituted that on my boards several years ago, and it really made the meetings go a lot more efficient, and we actually got more stuff done. Because we, you know, the important things we had time to discuss and, and the kind of the FYIs were kind of already covered. So just something to think about. And I'm really sorry I got to leave, but I do have a two o'clock meeting, and it takes me forever to figure out my computer. So thank you, everybody, and I'll, I'd look forward to seeing you all next month, I hope.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
So I'm sort of supportive of making any changes that would help with ensuring the efficiency of the board meeting. So in terms of providing a written update, I'm happy to do that. And also work towards providing any presentations in advance.
And I'll just echo and, and reflect that I think we're still sort of dealing with the hangover of not having a meeting in July. I think that there's just a lot of work that needs to be done. Plus, there's a lot of, you know, we had a retreat. We're still processing retreat. There's a lot of work that's going on sort of external to the board that we need to talk about. And as I'm sure board members can appreciate, it's hard to accurately predict how long a, a, agenda item is going to take. So we try our best. But I think certainly there's always room to, you know, learn from past experiences and keep trying. Okay, so I think this ought to be a reasonably quick Agenda Item M, which is to initiate review of health standards, PE standards, Okay, so I think this ought to be a reasonably quick agenda item M, which is to initiate review of health standards, PE standards, and ethnic studies standards, and refer them to the Student Performance Standards Committee. I do have motions prepared that I'm happy to read just to move things along. I'm not hearing any disagreement. Okay. First, I will entertain a motion that the Student Performance Standards Committee consider the proposed updates to the National Health Education standards that were presented to the board at its August 21st, 2024 meeting, and develop recommendations for the full board to consider pursuant to 16 VSA Section 164.9. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion has carried. I will further entertain a motion that the Student Performance Standards Committee consider the proposed updates to the Society for Health and Physical Educators Shape America: National Physical Education Standards that were presented to the board at its August 21st, 2024 meeting, and develop recommendations for the full board to consider pursuant to 16 VSA Section 164.9. Is there a motion? Moved by Kim. Seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And finally, I will entertain a motion that the Student Performance Standards Committee consider the proposed Iris Ethnic Studies standards framework that was presented to the board at its September 20th, 2023 meeting, and develop recommendations for the full board to consider pursuant to 16 VSA Section 164.9. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Tammy.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Lyle. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Just wasn't sure if it was necessary just because it was already there, but that's okay. It was in the committee that we changed the name of.
Yeah, that is a good point, but sure.
I don't care. Like, let's, we'll vote it twice.
We'll just vote it. All right. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we're going to stop there. We have a lot to consider at our October meeting. I'm going to take up future meeting planning at this point. As you all know, we had tried to be in person. There were some scheduling hiccups that kind of confronted us the end of last week. So we went virtual for this meeting. I think the current plan to be confirmed is to be in Essex in October and St. Johnsbury in November. So I'm just going to put that out there. As far as agenda items, and I think we're, I'm going to put out everything that I have on my list. I do think we are going to have to prioritize, and some of these things might get shifted to October. But I'm just going to note for clarity, we will need to continue the review of board committees and membership. As I said, we got through the hard work today. That should not take a long time. With regard to the State Board of Education budget, I think in the interest of time, you guys have all received the proposed budget in the agenda packet. And what I would recommend is if you could get back to Tammy and me by Monday morning, whether you have, I mean, agreement would be great. If you have any questions or concerns, please note those because Tammy and I need to finish this and then get it submitted. So that's my recommendation as far as the budget goes. Then there will be a deeper update on the Commission of Future of Public Education in Vermont. I will also just flag that there is a Commission Communications and Engagement Subcommittee that is working on what they are referring to as a toolkit for commission members with the expectation that each commission member represents, you know, a body. And so the idea is that there would be a toolkit and all commission members are expected to have conversations with their entity that they represent to then be able to report back to the commission. So that toolkit has not been developed yet. But my expectation is that there will be opportunities at future board meetings to have long, detailed conversations about issues that the commission is considering, which will then allow me to go back to the commission with discussions that board members have had. In the meantime, board members are always, always, always welcome to reach out to me with comments, questions. I'm happy to talk about it, and I'm sorry that we ran out of time today. We will also take up reflections on the retreat at our next meeting, and my hope is that we will have two roles and responsibilities committee meetings before then, so we will have more to be able to report back on. In addition to that, I have the Rivendell Interstate Compact Commission Amendment to Articles of Agreement. That may come before the board. An update on district quality standards that was moved from today's meeting. We may have some accrediting agencies that are seeking recognition by the board pursuant to the updates to our 2200 series. We will have the Special Education Advisory Panel update. They had not finished their annual report, but expect that it will be done by October. We will also have an update on pending litigation. There may be a waiver request by North Country Union High School because they started school four days late. I will also look into reimbursement to attend conferences. We also move the state of the state with regard to special education, and then at some point we'll get a more in-depth report from the Agencies Listen and Learn Tour. Have I missed anything?
I'm not sure I would know right now, Jennifer. So I think, how about we just leave it? How about, I think what would be really helpful is if you could get an email out to the board that says, here's what I have on my list, so we can all sort of cross-check our list. It's hard to do that sort of orally, right? And then that can feed into the agenda prep.
Okay. Can I just mention that I didn't hear it, Jennifer, so maybe you said it, and I'm also proud too. I'm sure we all are. Did you say we're going to have the AOE and Emily come back to discuss the situation with independent schools? I did not hear that.
I have that down for November.
But I thought you heard several of us say that we were, Jenna, you're muted, but I think several of us said that that was not an acceptable timeline, and there are other things on here that could wait.
So that may shift up, but as I, I mean, my parting words with that comment were that we can't direct the agency. I think the agency heard our concerns. And so Zoe needs to get things to the board, and then we need to generate questions, and then they need to respond. If that can all happen by our October board meeting, I think absolutely we will put that on. I'm just being realistic that there are three steps there, and we need to post our agenda the Friday before we meet the following Wednesday. So I will.
Yes. I know you know my frustration, and I was not the only one sharing that concern and frustration. I know that you described a different understanding of what the process would be from our work together on 2200. Tom didn't weigh in. We have been asking about this for well over a year and a half, and it hasn't just been me. I think that you have to imagine a FOIA request to get forms that have been referenced in several meetings and then updated and referenced and emails sent to us without the attachment of what the updated form looks like is really, it's not us directing the AOE what to do. It's us being accountable to our responsibility for school approvals and what is approved to receive public tuition. It just, for us to be lapsing on that since July of 2023 and compelling something that allows us to take action on our responsibility is, it is unacceptable.
So all I can say is, as we discussed, when we get the documents from the agency, I'm going to give board members a week to review the documents, get back to me with questions, and then we will forward those questions with a copy to the full board, back to the agency. And when they respond to those questions, that's when it will go on our agenda. So I do have it listed. If that can all be accomplished by October, we will prioritize that. But as I sit here today, I don't know how that's going to play out. So I've got it on the list, and I think, you know, that's the best that I can promise you.
I might argue that we put it on the agenda for our discussion whether or not we've gotten response. I feel like there has been adequate concern by this board. We are going to be able to look at minimally at the forms. It sounds like Zoe committed to that. And we will have framed our questions. So I think we have a responsibility in statute to attend to this. We ourselves are in violation, I think, by virtue of the fact the AOE hasn't done their part in having us be able to know who should have been eligible to receive public tuition effective July 1 of 2023. And I believe that is in some way on us, whether or not we can compel the AOE to do their job.
Jenna, and then Tammy.
Can I defer to Tammy because mine's off topic? Sorry.
Okay, Tammy and then Zoe.
I'm just going to observe, and I'm not trying to poke a bear here, but we're having a lot of conversations about agenda here, and we've had a lot of challenges with agenda. And so this is one of those things, I think, as the Roles and Responsibilities Committee, we need to address, is how do we set agendas? How do we set priorities? I think this is, this conversation is showing that. So I think I just want to, I just want to note that that's part of what's going on here, is that we're having challenges as a group figuring out how we prioritize and set agendas. And I know that that is something that has been tabled as a point of conversation of other Roles and Responsibilities Committee, but I'm going to respectfully ask that we revisit that tabling because I think today's meeting and some of the conversations we're having right now are highlighting the challenges that we're all struggling with on this, in that we really need to get some things written down about how we do agendas.
I don't know if I agree with that, Tammy. I mean, like, we're basically asking someone, we're demanding that the agency, you know, do two levels of response to us in time for our October meeting. The reason I'm stuck has nothing to do with how we set agendas. The reason I'm stuck is because I'm not Zoe. I'm not Zoe's staff. I don't know how long it's reasonable to think that they're going to take to respond to this. So I can't answer that question.
I don't disagree with you on that. I'm just noting that we're all having conversations about agenda here, again, at the end of the meeting at two o'clock. And that we got, we need to talk about how we set agendas generally, prioritize things on agendas generally. Because we've got a lot of stuff, and you just mentioned it. Like, we got a lot of stuff kicking around, and Rich had some suggestions on agenda planning and how to structure agenda meeting materials. I'm just highlighting that I think if we all stood back and reflected on today's meeting, it would be the case that I think we all could walk away with some ideas about how we might do agendas differently. That's all I'm saying. It's not with respect to this. With respect to Kim, I think Jen, I think Jennifer's right. I don't know that we can say anymore about that, but I am noting more at 2:05. And I personally have to drop off now. So I don't know how we want to wrap things up.
Let me turn to Zoe.
So I just want to express that I hear this is a very important topic in consideration for the State Board of Education, and that it likely will involve more than one discussion or one presentation. I'm comfortable having this on the agenda in October and being able to bring forward the information that we have in response to your questions. My understanding is that we have not, as an agency, noted any issues with approved independent schools that would need action by the board at this time. And I will also make sure that, I'm also hearing that many of the questions and the confusion has been ongoing since 2023. And I'm very committed, being new in this role, to make sure that everyone understands the compliance actions taken, that we're all on the same page, and that there's full transparency around how the agency is supporting the implementation of these revised rules.
Okay. So I scooted it up, cut and paste. It is now on the agenda for October. Thank you, Zoe. Anything else?
I think that, Jennifer, we should be attending to that with, oh, I'm sorry, Jen, I didn't.
That's okay, keep going. Mine's quick.
I was just going to say, I think that we need to be attending to that which we have responsibility for, that which is expressed in statute. And while it was interesting to hear about the community schools again, I know that that level of service delivery is happening in a bunch of different models across the state, and I appreciate that it was nice for them to have a platform for this discussion. But it was a video we had seen before, and I think in the interest of the time devoted on our agenda, it should be aligned with that for which we have a statutory responsibility. And I think that would be important for us to attend to and be cautious about what else we have creeping. I know I've said this before, but we should really have a work plan for things like student data reporting and other areas where we have a statutory responsibility, and it would be on our calendar, and then everything else could work around it. That's my thoughts, sort of in alignment with Rich's meeting management and how to make it be a little bit more efficient so that we can get more work done and have committees doing some work that comes back to the full board.
Thanks.
Well, that was right in line with what I was saying. I was going to say, but my plea is that for the next two months when we're visiting schools, we also give schools the opportunity to do some sort of showcase, right? So given that is happening, could we not plan any other presentations and kind of get through some of the stuff?
Special Education Advisory Panel, they are statutorily required to be presenting to us, so.
Great. Well, that falls in line with what Kim was saying, right? Like, if it's.
Yeah. So that is a presentation that needs to happen. Okay. Anything?
My point was not that. It was any other presentations, could we not schedule them to try to get through some of the agenda items that we have building?
Lyle.
And to that, if we could get some information from the special ed person in advance, then we might be able to move that more quickly.
Yes, absolutely.
And Zoe, I know you know this.
Katie is in Essex. Oh, I'm sorry, Lyle. I was just going to say, I think Katie still lives in Essex, and so maybe she'll join us in person.
And Zoe, you have jumped into a group that is very passionate about what we do. It has nothing to do with you, things that have happened in the past. So thank you for picking up the ball and running with things now.
Yeah, I appreciate the passion, and I share your commitment to ensuring that every student in Vermont has access to high-quality education, and so also very committed to being responsive to questions that you have. So I welcome the conversation and also the opportunity to follow up.
Great. Anything else before we move to public comment? Hearing none. If there are members of the public who are still with us and wish to be heard, you can raise your hand by pressing the hand icon on the Teams platform or star five if you are calling. I see Elizabeth Burrows.
Hi, thank you for hearing my voice again. Boy, that was a heck of a meeting. I was asked by somebody to point out that the AOE website still lists Heather Boucher, the Carolus, I'm sorry if I have butchered that name, the special ed director, and Ted Fisher on its website, among several others who are no longer there. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard? Representative Burrows, are you back? Oh, okay. All right, I am not seeing any other hands raised. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? I think we are unanimous. We stand in a German. Thank you, guys, all for a very productive meeting. Take care.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye.
Have a nice day. Bye.